Good evening. We would like to call the Richmond Public School Board meeting, work session, I'm sorry, to order Monday, June 5th.
Will the board members your presentation start? Ms. Board?
Here.
Ms. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Mander.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Dr. Stewie?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
We have a team on that chair. Thank you. Next item?
I'm sorry, Ms. Carter, and I looked right at you. I'm so sorry.
You probably thought I was listed.
(laughing).
If anyone needs an interpreter in Spanish, we'll be happy to help. See, I can translate in Spanish. And just as an FYI, the Spanish interpreters assisted a number of Spanish families this weekend at the Escolastic Awards at one of the Title I ceremonies, and we were very happy to invite them to the event.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Gracias. Next item?
The next item is item 1.03, the adoption of the agenda, and I do have one addition, and that is to receive a report from the Virginia Department of Education. Are there any other additions?
No, Madam Clerk. Need a motion to...
Second.
This may move out Mr. Young and second by Ms. Owen to approve the amended agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the agenda has been amended.
The next item is 1.04, through the minutes of the May 15, 2017 meeting. Those minutes were distributed to you for your review. I have not received any changes or edits. I just ask if you approve at this time.
Seeing that we have no corrections to the minutes, the minutes will be approved as received.
The next item is recognition. And the next item is public information. I do not have any speakers to sign up in advance. Madam Chair, would you please...
If we have members in the audience that would like to come forward, the board to speak, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you have five minutes. When you come forward, please state your name and sign in.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Vett and members of the school board, my name is Tom Harvey Brown. And I've spoken to you in the last two months about the importance of the strategic plan and the results of operating without one. I am pleased to report with the support of Dr. Vett, I truly appreciate your help. Dr. King, Dr. Leonard, Mr. Krantz, and Principal Mary Taylor, we have re-initiated the strategic plan process at Oak Grove Elementary. All of our partners, school administration, and community are committed to developing a plan that we can all support. It is imperative for the school board to begin the strategic plan process as well, as soon as possible, in my opinion. You don't have the luxury of waiting to find a new school superintendent, and those processes need to be parallel at the same time. How can you interview for the position if you don't have a roadmap of where you might be headed and where you're trying to go? Have you determined if the new superintendent will support or fit in to your plan? At the same time, this new superintendent should have the opportunity to modify the plan and provide their input. The reality is that you've been elected to a position that makes it impossible to tackle one major issue at a time. At the same time you're hiring a new superintendent, you have to take on re-zoning, right size in the school system, facilities upgrade, budget short mark, and this goes on and on and on. It goes without saying that you are going to have to take on more than one issue at a time in your four-year tenure. I was impressed during your campaign for school board, your visions for the school system. It should not be difficult to get your collective visions formalized in a written plan and presented to the community. I was involved in the development of the district's strategic plan, which then led to the development of the Oak Grove School strategic plan, as well as about six other elementary schools. And we were charged with the task of developing a strategic plan that would support the division on, that so many of the district, the community was involved. You should review the previous process involved, and I would ask members of our community to be as engaged as they were in the previous process. Chairperson Page, as I recall, you were involved in the previous strategic plan.
Thirty seconds.
I would ask you that you use your leadership skills to lead our board in taking on the surface of the new superintendent, as well as developing the strategic plan. This board is capable of conducting both processes, and I don't feel that you can wait to complete one before starting the other. We'll be two years down the road without any plan whatsoever.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, school boards, superintendent. My name is Charlotte Hare, and I'm president of the Richmond Education Association. I rise tonight to share some concerns that I have with you, so that you have an opportunity to do something about them. I have some serious concerns about the education compact. I've been doing some research, I've gone to a compact presentation, and I have some real serious concerns about the compact. I have concerns because I don't know if all the cards are on the table. I know what we are trying to accomplish, and I know that we're trying to have a cooperative partnership, so that things are not seen contentious, but I want to remind you that you were elected for a specific reason, with specific duties, and that City Council was elected for a specific reason with specific duties. City Council's job is to allocate the funding for the school division. It is not for them to tell you how to use the money, or to have you make an accounting for what you do with the money. You were elected to make policies for the school system and to do the running of the school system. It's the superintendent's job to see how that money should be spent in order to carry out your goals, your plan, your strategic plan and policy. I rise because foundations of where this compact came from was from charter schools, Denver and Miami. Persons who have been instrumental in putting together this compact was one of the same persons who stood before the previous school board and convinced them that Teach for America was the best thing for our children. If you believe Teach for America is the best thing for our children, and you stayed in the classroom less than three years, or three years or less, I have a problem with you putting together a compact related to education proclaiming to know what's best for our children. So, I suggest, and I beg of you, to do your research, think about what your role is, what the law says you have to do, think about what the law says the City Council has to do. And if all it takes is for someone to sit down and share what the goal is for this city for education, I can tell you right now what the goal is. Is that every single child in this school division has an equal equitable education. That's it. That's the only goal that this city needs to have. Until we get education right, we cannot expect to get the rest of the city right. And if we can't do it as a school board, we cannot depend on City Council to do that for us. It's your job to set the mission, set the goals, and find the person or persons to carry out those goals. That is not what their job is. So if you want to have a meeting, plan a meeting, put it on the calendar, come together, share what it is that the school system is doing, but why do you have to do extra work to show them what they're doing? They are not giving us any kind of accountability for getting our grass cut in our schools on time, for doing any of the other things that they're supposed to be doing for our schools. If they were doing their job on time, our principals would not have to go out and cut grass at our schools. We would not have to have volunteers to go out and maintain the grass. So I ask of you, I beg of you, do your homework, think long and hard about what this compact is setting out to do, because our children, our children, every single child, their future is at stake. We don't need anyone to tell us that anything related to Teach for America is the best thing for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight before you all to address the issues regarding, you know, bullying at the school.
Can you please say your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Tiffany Anderson.
Thank you.
I have two middle school students who attend Lucille Brown Little School. Basically, you know, there have been more than a few incidences where my children have encountered bullying, and it seems as though the bullies are giving a slap on the wrist. Earlier this week, well, last week, there was an incident where, you know, the school was basically disrupted. It was in a state of chaos. Basically, my daughter was involved in a fight, simply because, you know, there was a situation where there were cyberbullying going on, you know, outside of the school, which basically spilled into the school. There was mediation involved. It happened before my daughter reached school, actually. And basically, you know, when she got to school, no one bothered to pull her to the side, to give her mediation with the bully. You know, the school was fully aware of, you know, the incident, well before she arrived. Basically, there were multiple fights that erupted. Lucille Brown was in a state of chaos, and they could barely get it under control. You know, when they finally did get the situation under control, the other students were asked to go to their classrooms. My daughter encountered one of the young ladies who was cyberbullying her upon, you know, changing to her pre- next class, and in short, it escalated. You know, my daughter was in a position where she had to defend herself, and basically, you know, the bully actually only got a three-day suspension. They suspended my daughter for ten days. And I was kind of confused about that, because I'm like, this is a situation that happened outside of school, it spilled inside of the school, and yet, the children who are actually doing the bullying, they're only giving slap on the wrist. My daughter is, at this point, is banned from her eighth grade graduation. It's upsetting to her, as well as to me, because even when she went to school today...
Thirty seconds.
She had to take SOL testing, and these students were still taunting her, and she was taking her SOLs. And Lucille Brown has done nothing about it. So, I'm here to ask you guys to basically implement some type of disciplinary actions to these children who are bullying other children, you know, it's hurtful. But, you know, that is the concern that I want to address tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman, I'm speaking this evening as an individual. My piece is entitled "On a Non-Traditional Superintendent." I have always had a knee-jerk bias against a business or military superintendent. I'm rethinking. Why my bias? I've always assumed a business or military superintendent would come in trying to impose naive ideas about education, and crass ideas about how a school system should be run, more like McDonald's, or more like an Army Division. But what if that's just thinking in stereotypes? Let me put that more affirmatively. That is just thinking in stereotypes. What if a business or military superintendent came in zealous to empower those experts in the processes of instruction? Zealous in the commitment to empower others and hold them accountable in ways that are not same-old, same-old? The wrong business or military superintendent could be a disaster, but the wrong anything could be a disaster. Excellence is not a composite of stereotypes, either negative stereotypes or positive stereotypes. Individuals are not composites of the stereotypes that can be applied to them. Individuals are more uniquenesses than they are composites. Otherwise, male or brides would be the way to go. The analogy to romance is apt. Young adults sometimes make long lists of what they require in a mate. He needs to be between six feet and six feet two. He needs to have an Ivy League degree in a STEM field, preferably electrical engineering or computer science. Between the two, I'm flexible. Then they meet someone totally different at a party, and it's off to the races.
Thirty seconds.
Here's my point. Do not burden the search with a lot of stereotypical traits and criteria. Be open to the possibility that the best will be quite unlike your presuppositions. Be open to meeting the next superintendent, not at a party, but as a surprise. Consider the candidate who not only marches to a different drummer, but is a different drummer.
Thank you. Do we have any others that would like to come forward at this time? If not, this will conclude our public information period. Next item?
Madam Chair, we have concluded the next item. We have been joined by our students.
Yes. We want to go back to recognizing our student.
Madam Chair, the board members, we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize our, I think it started last month, but June also, because it's a short month, student representative to the board. Certificate, recertification appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Jasmine Jones Franklin Military Academy, who are serving as a student representative to the school board of the City of Richmond for the month of June 2017. Signed, Don Page, school board chair, David Superintendent.
We'd also like to add that Ms. Jones has a beautiful voice. I wish I could sing like that, but congratulations, and also, Ms. Jones will be attending Virginia Commonwealth University in the fall. New hip. Would you like to say some words? So please feel free.
The next item on the agenda is item 4, academic improvement items, 4.01, receive a report from the Department of Education.
To board members, tonight, we have been joined by Dr. Staples, who will provide the board with a overview of the division level review, and also answer any questions that board members may have at this time. But also be reminded, we will receive the detail review on June 19.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm trying to scroll through my list, my aura, and my process won't help. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Vett and the staff, thank you first for the opportunity to join you and discuss what will be an ongoing series of events where we have the opportunity to collaborate. Before I get into any detail, let me specifically say to each of you, thank you for your service. What you're doing on behalf of the community is too often a thankless task with less than necessary resources and impossible expectations. As we understand that that's what it means to run school divisions, I would thank you for taking on that responsibility and accepting that mantle. I want to begin by simply updating you on kind of where we are in the process, with the understanding that there are other meetings scheduled. In fact, Dr. Kennedy, State Board of Education's president, and I will be back in just a couple of weeks to give you another update. But recently, staff and contractors from the Virginia Department of Education conducted the onsite visit portion of a division-level review. And this division-level review was conducted at your request, based on your own review of data. And I think that confirms an excerpt from the standards of quality that speaks to expectations for the division-level review. This is the excerpt. When the Board of Education determines through the school academic review process that the failure of schools within a division to achieve full accreditation status is related to division-level failure to implement the standards of quality or other division-level action or inaction, the board may require a division-level academic review. In this case, you, the local board, initiated the academic review based on your own analysis of data. I bring that up because it's important to note this language. It implies that there is an expectation that the review will yield evidence of things that need correction. It begins with the expectation that all schools are fully accredited, and that there may be things going on at the division level that are impacting that accreditation status. So I don't think any of you should be surprised, an onsite review has findings that lead to corrective action. That's an inherent expectation of the process, because the outcomes aren't where you want them to be. Eventually, after the conduct of such review, and the time specified by the State Board of Education, the school board, local board, will submit a corrective action plan that is consistent with criteria established by the State Board. So the next steps in the process is for the State Board to begin to establish criteria to partner with you, the local school board, to determine how to respond to any findings in this division-level review. The purpose of the division-level review is to review and where appropriate, provide action steps for those elements of division-level work that either directly or indirectly support student achievement in order to increase overall division effectiveness. In short, a division-level review is comprehensive. It looks across all aspects of the school division. We've been engaged at the Department of Ed with Richmond City Schools individually for several years, where we work with specific schools. The division-level review says we're going to begin to look at a more macro level, not just the schools, but what's happening at the division level that might further support improvement at the school level. Now folks may be confused when we take such a comprehensive look, because they may say, well, how could transportation be impacting what's going on in the school? Or how could the operation of the food service program, or the writing of job descriptions? Well, in a comprehensive division-level review, we look across the division at all aspects to determine what could be improved in order to improve student performance. Once the onsite review is completed, then a memorandum of understanding will be developed. And I'm going to tell you more about this in just a second, but you're going to hear a lot about an MOU, memorandum of understanding, and that MOU will be the beginnings of a framework to address those division-level occurrences that could be improved to affect positively student achievement. That MOU will have to go before the State Board of Education first. It is their document. So the first time they will see the draft of an MOU isn't until they meet in June, and then they'll follow up in July. So it starts with them, because remember, they are establishing the criteria that they're going to ask you to respond to. So that MOU right now is being drafted for State Board review, and when Dr. Kennedy and I come back in two weeks, it'll be far enough along for us to begin to share with you some of the areas included in the MOU. After the State Board has approved it, it goes to the division, where we request appropriate signatures and review by the local board, and then returns to the Department of Ed for all signatures, and is returned as a final to the division. And again, I'll tell you more about that MOU in just a second. Concurrently with the MOU, a corrective action plan is drafted for review. Corrective action plan is specific about the steps that are to be taken in order to address any findings in that onsite division-level review. The corrective action plan draft will go through several, through a stakeholder process. It'll be led by the division, led by you and your staff, and that stakeholder process will inform the final corrective action plan. It should be part of your planning process to respond to division-level findings. You, the local board, will be asked to approve the corrective action plan, obtain the appropriate signatures, and return it to the Department of Ed, and then the State Board of Education will approve it to determine if you've met the criteria that they established in the MOU. Have you addressed the things they wanted you to address? Then a final copy will be returned to the division as your guiding document. The division-level review that was just conducted looked at five major categories of division operations. Academics and student success, leadership and governance, operations and support services, human resource leadership, and community relations and communications. That onsite review led to findings in some of these areas that will inform the State Board's work... that will inform the state board's work in drafting that MOU. The MOU, the memorandum of understanding, is a governance document. It is a contract between the Virginia State Board of Education and the local school division board. It is presented and approved first by the State Board of Education prior to being forwarded to the local division. It is signed by four main signatures. The President of the State Board of Education, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the Chairperson of the local school board, and the School Division Superintendent. The reason all four of those folks sign it is the document outlines the responsibilities of each. The idea of an MOU is to help each of those entities, the state board, the local school board, the local school division leadership, and the leadership of the Department of Education, clearly understand their responsibilities and assignments in implementing a corrective action plan that responds to any findings of the division level review. So there will be portions of the MOU specific to each of those four areas. What the State Board of Ed is to do, what the local board is to do, what the local superintendent and staff are to do, and what the Department of Education should do. As I've indicated, that MOU will be first reviewed by the State Board of Education in June. And Dr. Kennedy and I will be able to talk with you more completely about that in two weeks after they've reviewed our first draft. Now, the MOU utilizes a standard template. The State Board already has agreements with several local school boards around the state. So there's a standard template to help the State Board keep some continuity in reviewing them. However, it is customized specifically to the needs of the school division based on the outcomes and findings of that division level review. So the templates will all look the same, but the specific areas listed in the MOU will be tailored to the findings of that recent onsite review and other data that has been provided. The division level review, the onsite review, the memorandum of understanding, and the corrective action plan overlap in those five areas. Academics and student success, leadership and governance, operations and support services, human resource leadership, and community relations and communications. Typically, this process takes about three to four months to complete to allow each board to review, to engage, and to allow the collective staffs at the Department of Ed and in Richmond City Schools to clearly define expectations. As an example, if there is an item in the corrective action plan, there will be a specific detailed step as to what action should be taken. And there will be someone assigned to be responsible for that step. That way, each board can track progress and has a clear understanding of where the responsibility lies to make sure that plan is implemented. So this evening, I've tried to walk you through the process. I know that was longer than probably, but if you give the state superintendent a mic, he's gonna text the time. But I hope you understand what's coming next and what steps will follow. That onsite review was really an initial step in what will be a multi-step process culminating in a signed memorandum of understanding and an approved corrective action plan that you, the local board, and the State Board of Education agree is the proper course of action to improve outcomes in Richmond City Schools. Madam Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to share that initial process with you and will be happy to respond to any questions. Otherwise, I think I'll be seeing you in two weeks as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Well, Dr. Staples first, just like to say thank you so much for taking your time and sharing this information with us. At this time, I know board members have questions. Ms. Dorr and Ms. Marsh Carter.
Thank you, Dr. Staples. I just want to make sure that I understand just two quick clarifying questions.
Sure.
The two ways to have a division level review are, one, to request it, or two, the schools, the state has an assumption that schools aren't doing well and so they'll come in involuntarily, is that correct?
That's right, Mrs. Dorr. The state board may impose a division level review based on their own analysis of that.
In our case, we requested a division level review.
That is correct. But the division review was requested by the Richmond City Schools.
Thank you. And was that requested by the prior school board? Was it requested by the school board?
It was requested by the school board. I assume it was the prior school board, but it was requested by the board.
October board meeting presentation. The second year in October, more formally, the secret administration's request to have this done.
Gotcha. So they approved the administration's request. Okay. And how long is the corrective action plan in place for?
Until all schools are fully accredited. So the corrective action plan terminates when all schools achieve full accreditation.
So that really goes to the question that I was gonna have. Again, thank you for providing this oversight. We're anxiously waiting to see the findings. So as a part of the MOU, does it identify a timeframe within which we'd be expected to, is it set up a criteria? So we know we have the crisis in a Bible.
The corrective action plan usually has a timetable associated with it, what should be done first, when it should be accomplished, and when we expect those outcomes to be implemented. The memorandum of understanding is a bit more generic in the sense that it speaks to responsibilities and not specific steps in the corrective action. Hope that was an answer to your question.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Staples, good evening. Thank you. Speaking for yours truly, grateful for the opportunity to collaborate with Virginia Department of Education. I'm confident that you and your team will allow us to improve and achieve. I do have one question for you and specifically regards the five categories that you identified in the preceding remarks. And specifically, your discipline and culture are included anywhere therein.
I'll read for you the sections that would relate to that. Give me just a moment.
And perhaps I should have elaborated, but perhaps it's obvious whenever I reference culture and speaking of school culture.
That's correct. And we speak to it in really a couple of different areas. One is the student success tools. We look to see if, in fact, there are programs in place that provide support for students that lead to successful outcomes. The other is specific under operations and support services. We look for student safety and security components. So it's a two-pronged approach in the sense of what is there to make sure that schools are operated in a safe and orderly fashion so that all students may benefit? And what is there to support both groups and individual students as we move them towards success?
Thank you, sir. And so you've identified that those constitute opportunities for improvement for RPS, correct?
At this point, I haven't confirmed any findings in particular, but within the research, those are areas that will be reviewed and we'll be presenting them those as we go through the MOU and the corrective action plan. They are part of the review.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Dorr.
I have one additional question.
Ms. Marsh Carter.
So I'm assuming that best practices will be really outlined as part of corrective action plan?
Mrs. Carter, yes. The idea of the corrective action plan is to identify a specific finding and then to offer best practice that in fact would respond to that finding in a way to improve the outcome. Madam Chair, again, thank you, members of the board. I greatly appreciate your indulgence in allowing me to come. And I will see you in a couple of weeks with my partner, Dr. Billy Kennedy, President of the State Board of Education. Again, thank you for what you're doing on behalf of the children and community in Richmond.
Thank you. See you on the nineteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item.
The next item is four point zero two. Receive the Title I grant.
Good evening, Chairman Page. Dr. Bedding and members of the board, I'm here tonight to present the two thousand seventeen eighteen Title I grant application. As you're aware, we are operating under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, which funds federal education across the country. I've shared with you before the main highlights of ESSA. But just as a reminder, I will review them. Strongly touted in the legislation is accountability. However, unlike NCLB, ESSA has a strong component that provides the state's greater opportunities to impact what's going on in their schools. However, we still are going to be responsible for the instructional process in our schools and school improvement. We no longer will be required to have highly qualified teachers as defined by USED. Our highly qualified teachers will be defined by the State of Virginia, meaning that they will meet all the requirements the state has for certification. School improvement is another area that has changed. Under ESSA, we will move from priority and focus schools to comprehensive support and targeted support schools. Simply put, our priority schools will now become comprehensive schools and the school division will take a greater part in determining how those schools will be improved. The first three years, the school division will be responsible for that. And then it will be followed by the state in the fourth year if progress is not succeeded. In our targeted schools, those will be schools that are consistently underperforming and they will receive targeted support specifically for those subgroups that they're not succeeding in. The lowest five percent will be your comprehensive schools. And then those schools that are consistently underperforming will be your targeted assisted schools. We will also be required to meet sixty-seven percent graduation rate and will still be required to report our data to the state. So given that scenario, we have, we are moving forward with our Title I application that was sent to us by the State Department. Before you, you can see that I indicated that we'll be serving thirty-five schools. We, our allocation for two thousand seventeen eighteen is based on level funding or prior year allocation of fifteen million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. These funds will be appropriated using categorical funding. And we are currently serving thirty-five schools. Twenty-two of those are elementary, eight are middle, three are high, and two are specialty schools. Richmond Alternative and Amelia Street. I'd just like to explain that each school division selects the grade span that they will serve. Richmond Alternative School serves K-8 grade span. Any grade outside of that span that has a seventy-five percent or higher poverty rating must be funded. That is how we end up funding high schools. There are two models of implementing Title I programs. One is school-wide and the other is targeted assisted. We have thirty-four school-wide programs. A school-wide program can serve any child that needs support. However, in a targeted assisted school, the children must be identified early in the school year and only the children that are identified as low performing or at risk of failing can be served. Richmond Alternative School has submitted an application to be a school-wide program this year. And I'm confident that their application will be approved by the State Department. New to our requirements this year is that we have new set-asides. One of those set-asides is we have to set aside funding for foster care. We have to set aside funding also for neglected and delinquent services. There is not a set amount that we have to set aside for those services, but we still are required to support those programs. They're new to us this year, but in actuality, the children in those areas, subgroup, are currently being served in their schools because all except one of our schools last year, too, were school-wide. And so they were served. We also have a set aside for our homeless program. So we look forward to provide additional services for those children. How are the funds used? Title I funds in the thirty-five schools that we have are used to supplement, not supplant, non-federal funds to support eligible children. District level support includes our content specialist in math and reading. We also provide leadership from the division level for our parental involvement to work with our parent liaisons. We fund ninety-two teachers across the thirty-five schools. We fund thirty-five instructional assistants, and those include early childhood support. We can support our early childhood children although they're not a part of the K-8 grade span. Instructional resources are provided by the schools. They determine what resources they will need or use from their individual school allocations. We have math resource teachers, a limited number of math resource teachers that provide support at the elementary level. We fund parent liaisons. We currently have six parent liaisons. We will have six in seventeen eighteen. We're adding an additional bilingual parent liaison simply because of growth of that particular subgroup. We had wonderful support from our Hispanic families this year, attending our parent forums and other activities in our individual schools. And just from observation and data, we know that that's a strong need. We're working actively with the face office. Those individuals work out of the face office. We also fund two social workers, one to assist our ESL population and one to assist our homeless population. We provide support to the school, Office of School Improvement, to assist our priority and focus schools. We provide intervention services. Schools have different intervention vehicles that they're using. I have a few of those listed. We provide technical assistance, instructional coaches. This year, we're going to fund a PLC coordinator. And as you well know, this year, we are, have a large priority focus on professional learning communities. We provide an extensive amount of training for our schools. And we will continue that into the seventeen eighteen school year to increase our student support and achievement efforts. We fund technology. Each school determines what their needs are. And to the extent that our funds will allow them, they can support and use technology. Those are the things that are included in the grant. Our categorical funding. We have personnel, employee benefits, purchasing contract services, internal services, which are basically those things that we get in-house, like food services and security. We also provide sources for materials and supplies, which is our six thousand category. And then our last one is eight thousand, which is capital I, which is. Just so you have a little clarity on how Title I funds are allocated, it is formula-based. And the application has built-in formulas. And once we enter the data for membership and poverty, it pre-populates and we get the amount that each school will receive. it pre-populates and we get the amount that each school will receive. Are there any questions about the Title I application for two thousand seventeen eighteen?
Ms. Cosby.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scott. So each school will receive a, a different amount.
An allocation, yes.
And second, we know, of course, of some of the budget discussions happening at the federal level.
Yes.
That will impact Title I possible. When, when would that?
If, that won't affect us for seventeen eighteen. In fact, just two weeks ago, the federal allocations, their final allocations after approval of federal budget were released. So we know what Virginia will receive. What we, we also know what Richmond will receive, except the amount that you see on that federal allocation does not take into account what our State Department needs to take off the top for school improvement and some other things that they can take money off the top for. So it will be a bit less than what it says on the website. And so we have, over the years, been able to do an averaging of what the federal amount is and what we actually get. And it's a variance of anywhere from three to five percent.
No, just, are there any, what discussions are being had about? So we know we're okay with seventeen eighteen. What discussions are being had about possibly preparing for if there would be budget cuts to Title I funding going forward?
All the titles are, may well be affected simply because a larger portion of the federal dollars for education are going to be provided to, for, for support of school choice. There's a new grant coming for that. So those funds have to come from somewhere. So some of those funds will, will go to that. We, we don't know just yet how much that will be in terms of a cut to the state.
Dr. Ben.
The, what Dr. Scott said is correct. The issue that creates unknown and there's a looming fight. So it may drag it out. So it's important to know that that's going to be an issue also. So it's a choice issue and even the choice advocates are not happy with the way the choice plan is being rolled out. And a lot of it is not choice, but it's also a ramp up in defense fighting that's pulling money away from all of the title funds and a large grant. Now the place that we're going to get hit potentially, if it goes through, is our extended day. Higher achievement, a lot of those are 21st century and those types of monies are in danger of being taken away. So it's not only the allocation for Title I that funds is now doing today. We may be significantly devastated with regards to extended day and extra funds that go to other collaborative organizations that support education. There's this last meeting in Washington. It's everything from, this isn't going to fly, which means there's a fight. Who knows where it's going to land, but that's going to drag it out potentially, which creates more angst for the plan.
If there aren't any more questions, I seek the board's approval to submit the two thousand seventeen eighteen Title I application to the State Department. It is currently due by July one. Of course, we'd like to have it over there before then.
The next item. The main motion, so we can go forward. No, you follow me, Carter. So the motion is made by Ms. March Carter and second by this one to approve. Yes, the Title I grant, I'm sorry. The twenty seventeen eighteen. Any discussion? More questions?
Ms. Dole.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Dr. Sapien.
Yes.
Ms. Spade.
Yes.
Next item.
The next item is four point zero two, receiving update on Title two part A and Title three part A.
Hi, this is the Chair. I'm going to be talking to you guys. Members of the school board, colleagues, friends, RPS are here tonight to present to you the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen applications for Title two part A, which is teacher quality. Title three part A, which is for English language learners. And information on McKinney-Bento, which is also requiring board approval. So these are the three grants that I will be briefly going over tonight. Title two part A, of course, is for recruiting and retaining qualified teachers. As Dr. Scott has previously stated, it will be according to the State Board's definition of being qualified, as well as increasing the number of teachers who are in the classroom. So our grant tonight is to support class size deduction teachers as well. Moving speedily along, Title three is also to help develop high-quality language instruction and educational programs for our English language learners, as well as promoting parental and community participation. McKinney-Bento Education Grant is also to help support students who are defined as homeless to monitor their enrollment, attendance and supports for being successful in school, whether that be by providing transportation, immunization and other wraparound services for home students. According to tonight, you will see a chart laid out to briefly delineate the areas of support that we have for each grant. As I previously stated, class size deduction teachers are funded through Title two part A. We are doing all that we can to preserve personnel for these grants. I heard Ms. Cosby asking questions related to potential cuts. Well, with ESSA, the calculation for Title II funds is a little different. So we're having to set aside at least four times as much allocation of funds for private school participation this upcoming year. In the past, we took about thirty thousand dollars for private school participation for equitable services. This year, we have to set aside about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we're doing all we can to preserve our class size deduction teachers. For Title three part A. For Title three part A, we are funding a parent liaison, parent facilitator and then an instructional assistant. The funds for McKinney-Bento also support personnel services and those are in the form of a homeless specialist, regional coordinator, office associate, social worker. In our grants, we also provide contracted services in Title II for professional development, for teachers' tuition, coursework, becoming endorsed in a particular area. We also fund assessment, life and practice in helping teachers become professionally licensed and not just provisionally licensed teachers. We also fund a consortium membership with the University of Richmond for our Parks and Arts Program. In Title three part A, the position that we fund through contracted services is the literacy coach. We also provide data services, a program called Elevation, and then educational software so that students can learn on a one-to-one basis with Imagine Learning. The contracted services for McKinney-Bento is the shelter liaison and homeless support. And that this is a regional application, so it's supporting a liaison with Cudessburg. Travel for Title two part A, of course, teachers participate in conferences, seminars, workshops. They'll have you, and then a little funding for interdisciplinary travel from the coordinator. And then the conferences are listed specifically in the Title III application because that's what our specialists demand at the Virginia Department of Education. And then, of course, there are conferences that participants with the McKinney-Bento participated as well. Materials and supplies are provided by grant and the totals are listed there for you. And all of the ones like adjustments that I have to point out is about three hundred dollars more for Title three part A. And that concludes the presentation of the three grants that we are seeking approval for, which are all due by July one. Are there any questions?
Ms. Cosby.
I, I just wanted to clarify. So we have to set aside additional monies for this, for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen for taking the YAM for private schools.
Because if those students were enrolled in Richmond Public Schools, they would be receiving services. So the regulations call for participation in private schools as well. So we survey our private schools in this geographic location and find out their enrollment. And then the application is built-in formulas to make certain that we provide equitable services to students enrolled in private schools.
Ms. Cosby.
Traditionally, how many students have we served in this capacity going to private schools?
Traditionally, that number is a little different because each year, the private schools can say whether or not they want to participate in services at all. For instance, in the past, there are about twenty private schools that are listed with different positions. And this year, we have a significant, um, vast number of private schools who are wishing to participate. So that number is somewhere around. And it's often delineated in the application. So we have about, about sixty-six dollars per student and I'd say it's about eight hundred students.
Any other question? Thank you. So Ms. Fostick, I know you said that you're asking for approval tonight, but it was scheduled to be on the agenda for the June nineteenth meeting for approval.
Okay, that's fine. Like I said, it's also July one. McKinney-Bento is June thirty. So we will be well within our time to get it to the State Department. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next item.
The next item is to receive a presentation on direct instruction.
So this is a presentation on a direct instruction. Ms. Cosby.
Hi, Board members. So I have the pleasure of speaking with members from an organization called RISC, which is Richmond is involved to strengthen our communities. And they had several, part of their mission is to look at the Richmond area and the tri-cities and, and really figure out what are some of the major, major issues that we have to work on and address in the community. And one of them that they identified was childhood literacy. And that's a serious, serious problem. We know that there is a huge disparity when we talk about young people who will come from more affluent populations versus those who don't. It's called a thirty million word gap that, that we deal with on a daily basis. And we know that our teachers and RPS and our administrators probably see that disparity every, every day out there in Virginia. And so when we look at our data with Richmond Public Schools, we see that, yes, absolutely, that we, it is an area that, that we do have to continue to, to work on. I, once I was approached by the organization, I contacted Dr. Benton and Dr. Kane and because I thought that what they were presenting is solution. And that solution was direct instruction, something for us to consider. And after presenting it to Dr. Benton and to Dr. Kane, Dr. Kane did inform us that there are some elements that we're using with direct instruction that I don't think we're doing it in its totality. And so Dr. Sapien and I had an opportunity to go to Baltimore City Public Schools and we went to, as we shared with members of the board, we went to one school called Central.
City Springs.
City Springs. And City Springs, the population there, I believe, is eighty-nine percent or ninety percent re-reduced lunch. It is located in the middle of a housing project. And we were able to see direct instruction in action and were in awe. We saw preschool classes with young people who are reading at kindergarten levels. We saw kindergarten classes with young people who are reading at first grade levels. And so sometimes we have a tendency of using poverty as an excuse for the lack of achievement. And what I saw there was a huge, was, was an example that no, poverty is not an excuse, that our students can achieve, they will achieve it. We have to set the expectations and provide tools that are effective. And so I was really impressed by it. I'm sure Dr. Sapien can talk to it a little bit more. And I wanted board members to hear a little bit more about this program and if it's something that we are interested in continuing to pursue, to ask the administration to pursue it and administration to come back with suggestions. Yes, this is good for the district, no, it's not. Or if it is, how can it be implemented? And so Dr. Sapien, if you have a couple more and then I'm going to be quiet because I'm a little intense.
I would say that what the public can describe is how exciting this whole sort of world is. Seeing students there, really just naturally just reading and just excited about it. It was a situation where not just the student, but the educator was very excited and just very confident in what they were doing. And so I'd assume that you'd have to see for yourself.
Hi, my name is Elijah and I am in the third grade at Oldham Shepherd Elementary School. I have been a struggling reader for a few years. When I was in the first grade, my teacher told my parents that I would, at the end of the school year, that I would fail. My mom and dad, they not accept that and stepped into action. My, my mom brought my story to RISC because she, she knew that, that there were another, another kids, other kids, right people were having a hard ti- hard time. I continued to work hard and push and know that one day Noah will tell me, will tell me that I have a problem reading. I want to be successful and I believe there was hope for all of us. I hope that tonight, on behalf of thousands of kids who couldn't read, we will learn, learn to read so we can do a great thing when we grow up. And if we can tell, learn to read, we just, we just need the right, the right tools to learn.
Good evening. My name is Bernita Yammer and this is my son Elijah. My family has been involved at Overby Shepherd Elementary School for nine years. As all three of my children have attended that school. I am also a former Richmond Public Schools student. Almost three years ago, when I found out that Elijah was in danger of failing, I was upset that I had not been told what was going on with him until it was almost too late. I work with all of my children on their schoolwork and I communicate with their teachers on a regular basis, but I don't have a literacy degree. It was difficult to know that at the end of the school year that my child was failing and the teacher could not assist me and finding the best solution to help my child pass the first grade. I knew that this was a problem, that this problem was not about if Elijah was smart enough or if I was present enough. He wasn't being taught to read effectively. He and his teachers didn't have the best tools to teach or learn reading. We are here tonight with RISC, Richmonders Involved to Strengthen Our Communities, to show our support to Richmond Public Schools, highlighting direct instruction. If you are here with RISC, will you please stand with us? With RISC leaders, I have gone to Baltimore four times. And I have witnessed children who live in the poorest neighborhoods of Baltimore read on grade levels beyond their years. We know that direct instruction curriculum has been around for a long time and has the track record of teaching children from all backgrounds to read on grade level. And it will make a huge difference for our kids here in Richmond. We are very excited that you are taking this time to learn about direct instruction and that members of the board have visited Baltimore with us and taken proactive steps to see how this program can work here in Richmond. We are here tonight to show our enthusiasm and to let you know that we are ready to partner with you through the implementation process, making sure that the community, parents, and school staff is informed and that everyone in the school system has the support they need to implement direct instruction. We are looking forward to seeing our kids receiving the tools they need to read on grade level. Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
Good evening. And chairs, school board members, and Superintendent Benton, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you guys a little bit about the research behind direct instruction. I'm pretty impressed with your resolve. I really admire that you self-initiated, you were proactive in the video partnership. I think that's a great step. I also admire your fortitude to invite a college professor to come and talk to you guys about data. Most exciting thing in the world to do. But, you know, you are faced with a particularly difficult problem, and that is literacy here in your provision. And we need to figure out how to address that. And there's lots of folks who are telling you how to do it. Get it? There's lots of people that are saying this is the way to do it, and they feel very passionate about how to do this. I don't envy your task of being able to choose that path. That's a very difficult thing to do. One thing that I've found that has helped me in working with a multitude of school divisions and just wrapping up a five-year stint with the All the Public Schools in East St. Louis, is I got to follow the data trail. That helps me get away from opinion and more, hey, bang for the buck, this is what's going to help us a little bit. So in my five minutes, I'm going to go through thirty-five years' worth of research in direct instruction. Probably not. But I did want to start with where it all started, that Project Follow Through. I was supposed to start something, but you have the PowerPoint in front of you. Project Follow Through was a close to a billion-dollar Department of Ed study. And basically, it was just part of Johnson's administration saying, hey, look, what is the best way to educate children? There was a whole lot of approaches, and while those approaches might have a different name now or change, it's really the same approaches. And what that administration wanted to do is, what is the best way to teach kids to read? We can get kids out of poverty if they can read. We know that. If they can't read, guess what? They're going to stay in that same situation they have and it's going to repeat in the cycle. So there was but one program that had positive effects, not only on achievement, but affect, how do we feel about ourselves, and also IQ, and that was direct instruction. They followed those kids for twenty-seven years into adulthood. They looked at college completion rates, high school completion. And what they found is they got three years, four years of direct instruction, it stuck with them. It really was an exciting time. Now, as we progress, but that was a bit of time, if you switch to your next page, we're looking at Richmond's SOL scores. This is something we've seen. And on the surface, you can kind of see that it could be a bit staggering. It's, trust me, it's not the worst that I've seen. I've seen twelve percent pass rates, seven percent pass rates. This is very doable. This can be fixed, but it's going to take some work. So your next page is you see that trend line, and that's your SOL pass rate. And you can see it's kind of flat, almost descending a little bit. So we're dropping a little bit in our reading. So let's get to some of the answers for direct instruction. The third grade reading is just a typical school that we've worked with. And as you can see, I'm not sure what the green box is, but there we go. But as you can see, there is a pattern where schools are steadily increasing. How do you do that? It's not a magic box. Direct instruction breaks things down into small digestible chunks and provides enough opportunities for kids to get and practice it. It's pretty simple. It's not magic. It's just taking evidence-based practices, putting it into a program, and then assessing that. So as we go into the third grade reading mastery plus, how do we assess that? Because the key is predictive utility. How can I predict in October how our students are going to do on these high-stake assessments in May and in June? One way that we can do that is we know that this curriculum is aligned with Virginia's standards of learning. We know through our repeated exposure what the pass rate's going to be if they get to a certain level in lesson, and we just chart that. So if you see that line, that line shows that aim line is where those teachers need to be able to be with regards to lesson progress for mastery. And what's happening is if you look in January, we see a drop in one teacher. And in that particular area, we can target our professional development. So what we did is we went in, we provided some additional professional development for that teacher. We rectified the problem within three coaching visits, and boom, her score started taking off. We're not going to wait until June or May when the scores come back and say, okay, now what are we going to do to fix this? The next page is the corrective. And in that, those individuals are looking at some of the middle school. We have children who are reading at a first, second grade level in middle school. How do we fix that? We do the exact same thing, teach them systematically and explicitly. We have the aim line. We know that we can recover thirty-three percent to fifty percent of those kids that make it to that aim line. Right now, we're recovering none of those kids. Those kids that are scoring in the two-seventies, we can go in, we can put them through this, we can get them a couple of years, and we're going to give a thirty percent pass rate, forty percent pass rate of those volunteer kids. We also know that if we get to the aim line of those kids in the regular programs, we can get between an eighty-five and a ninety percent pass rate. This has continued over and over. The last page that I want you guys to pay particular attention to are the school divisions. And as you can see, the first bar graph for this, just a sampling of schools, you can see where they are pretty much where you are now. Some of them a lot lower than where you are. And after a year and a half, two years of direct instruction, that would be the second bar graph. You're seeing the schools go from a forty-five percent pass rate to a ninety-eight percent pass rate, from a thirty percent pass rate to an eighty-five percent pass rate, from a sixty percent pass rate to a ninety percent, forty to ninety, forty to eighty-five, thirty to eighty-five. It's consistent. This is just a tool. But when implemented well, we consistently see the same results happening. You will also notice the third bar graph where there is a regression, where all of a sudden they were at ninety-eight percent pass rate and they dropped down to sixty-four. Why? Because those programs were removed. If you look at that yellow, if you look at that third bar graph, this, all of the schools removed the direct instruction after five years, and this is their 2016 SOL scores. There is a regression. The one variable is that when you implement this and you put it with fidelity and you give enough professional development to your teachers, you see pretty amazing things. We went and visited City Springs Elementary School. Our goal is, in five years, to have schools come to Richmond Public Schools and say, what is it that you're doing? It's a tool, it's a very effective tool. The last slide was a practice. Being a college professor, I always wanted you someone hands-on, but I'm not going to waste your time with that. I'll give you a break from it. But I'll be glad to entertain any questions when we finish. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Lauren Ramsor, a pastor at Bon Air Presbyterian Church and part of RISC. I have a five-year-old daughter, and I've been part of her learning how to read and teaching her how to read. And I've been seeing how she gets frustrated, she can't decode a word, and doesn't know how to make the next step. So I see how important direct instruction is so that our children don't get frustrated and learn how to love and feel successful in their reading journey. I want to share with you some details about implementing direct instruction, this proven program before, and then we'll talk about some next steps. We learned from visiting Baltimore City Schools and from Dr. Jones that implementing direct instruction with fidelity is absolutely essential for this program to be successful. Direct instruction provides best practices for teachers, involves initial training and ongoing coaching so that the teachers and the staff have the ongoing support they need to fully implement the program. There are three service providers that provide coaching and training for direct instruction. And they all have successfully implemented this program across the country. And they all provide similar services. This includes placement testing for all students. This would happen before the end of the school year. This allows for accurate placements for students when the school year begins so they can immediately start in improving their reading at the very beginning of the school year. The next step is training on direct instructions for teachers and staff. All of these organizations provide a strong foundation for teachers so they can hit the ground running with direct instruction when school starts. Some of the providers do training at conferences over the summer, some provide training onsite. There's ongoing coaching by each of these service providers in the first year of implementation. They sit side by side. There's an, and eventually that then translates into an onsite direct instruction coach, which would be part of the school staff to be able to provide that support and ongoing instruction to teachers. The cost of this implementation is a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for six hundred students in grades K through six. It varies a little bit depending on the organization that you would choose. That includes all the materials, the training and support. The only cost that's not included would be the pay for teachers to attend a training. I also want to invite you all to join us on another trip to Baltimore so that you can see this curriculum that is being successfully implemented. I sat in a kindergarten classroom of students who were almost a hundred percent English as a second language. It was a kindergarten class, and every single student in that classroom read. They were reading a book. It was amazing to see. And I hope you all will join us to visit the Baltimore City Schools this fall so you can see for your own eyes the success that they're having in the poorest communities in Baltimore City, teaching every single one of their students to read. We're really excited to have the opportunity to be here with you tonight and look forward to working with you and following up with you as you consider this program. Thank you.
Do we have questions? I have a question. Dr. Jones? So my question, in the school localities that remove direct instruction, did it have to do with funding or?
These schools started this as part of Reading First. And Reading First in the state of Virginia required certain programs that had evidence and support they used, and they selected the Reading Mastery Program. Then, as they made success, successful gains, it kind of went along the lines of its curriculum adoption year, and they had to spend those funds. And they decided to go in a different direction. I can say now that two of those divisions, after looking at their scores, and this year's scores were struggling too, are now re-implementing the direct instruction program, so they're going back to it. Sometimes in education, we don't follow the data, and we forget what got us there. And we say something new is always something better. And that's generally not always the case. Sometimes something new is just that, something new. So lessons learned, a great tribute to these school divisions who are now actively going back and saying, okay, it's time to read. So I appreciate your question. While up here, does anybody else have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
DeStor. Is the, I know RPS implemented the Voyager program. Is that related to direct instruction or?
No, ma'am. Voyager came out during Reading First around 2002, and it was one of those programs that had promising research, and a lot of schools adopted it. Unfortunately, the school divisions weren't as successful with that, and they really did the implementation. What sets a direct instruction apart is the training. It's really that ongoing support. Too often, what we place these expectations on teachers, here's the new thing, and we don't provide the support necessary for them to implement it. Direct instruction is contingent on that side-by-side coaching, and it is built in. But more importantly, there's a formative assessment built into it. So those individuals will see day-to-day how those students are doing. We're not going to wait for some summative benchmark assessment. We can validate that formative assessment data that day-to-day with some external assessment that you guys choose. But every day, that teacher knows, did the kids get it? And that allows for them to reteach. It's pretty powerful to use that in conjunction with explicit instruction. So thanks for the question. Anyone else?
Next question. Funding.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure there are grants out there that's directly related to supporting this initiative?
Yeah, there are and there aren't. It really depends on your, I would go and talk to the two grant folks that were just there. But I would also say that you can do this through your existing curriculum budget. It is an approved, state of Virginia approved program, and you can bundle that with the coaching. And so that's what a lot of the divisions are doing, is they're using their existing curriculum. And it's on par. The corrective program, which is really powerful for the middle school students, you got a lot of disenfranchised middle school students. They're a bit angry at the system because they're in eighth grade and they can't decode the word "this." And now they're supposed to read in front of this little girl that they're trying to impress. They're not going to do it. They're going to become a behavior problem and get thrown out of class instead of being ridiculed by their peers. We have worked hard, but we have not worked smart sometimes. And sometimes we say, well, this kid can't learn to read. I beg to differ. You can take that middle school kid who's a behavior problem, all of a sudden, you get that child reading, they start believing in the system again. And once they become successful, guess what? Their behavior referrals diminish. We see a marked of two-thirds of the behavior referrals written in the English classrooms when kids are successful. They start believing in them once again. I know you want to do what's right. And I know this is tough. Go look up the research on direct instruction. Go look at Gage Middle School in California. Go look at some of these schools that are going, we can do better than we're doing right now. This is a tool, it's all a tool, it's contingent on well-trained teachers that teach high and have high expectations.
Dr. Benton?
Dr. Jones, I have a question that I want to share with the board. The number of schools in Baltimore that have direct instruction, do you know?
You are a superintendent. I don't know how many are members of the Baltimore Curriculum Budget, but it's over ten, less than a hundred.
And the reason I wanted to share, because it's going to get to something else you said in your presentation. I know it's not in every school because I talked to a superintendent.
Oh, yeah.
They have not done it even in the vision district wide. So you need to know that. So there are pockets of success that are happening and others that are not for right reasons. But I think that I would tell this board, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, they said a couple of things that you, I really want you to hold on to. The data of implementation, the professional development, and the resources to go with it. And that has been the bane of our existence, which you will see in the climate assessment that we show you of why things that we have tried also have not been successful. This will fail if you don't do that, no matter how good it is. So I want you to hear those comments that they put in the presentation because that's been the repeat. And he touched on the inability to wait for the data and get true trend data. and get true trend data to make a decision about something. And we see the latest greatest thing that come out, and then we jump ship. We, when we got here, did an analysis. We had a bunch of stuff we were doing, but we weren't doing a lot of stuff well. And we need to focus on doing a few things well and get deeper, and then doing a lot of different stuff. And so I would tell you, if you're going to pursue this, there has to be a courageous conversation of whether you're going to put the coaching, is really what it is, model sitting there, whether there's going to be the resources, and whether it's going to be professional development time that's going to be allocated. And in truth, the same model we tried to put in when we got here, which was time to actually learn, practice, and then take time to reset and go back and reflect what was working, what was not. The other thing that we've had to take away that they talked about, and we gave you a mid-year report, a formative assessment data we shared with you mid-year. And that data was misused in the public, as if our kids were struggling. The formative assessment that he was talking about is the formative assessments that you use to inform what you need to reteach and do better on that. That's the bulk of what you got in mid-year that we showed you. Somehow, it was this far-reaching, like it was summative, decision-making that permeated everywhere. That means that you also have to have a courageous conversation at school-based level about doing that formative assessment data in time to look at it, to reinforce what needs to be taught or retaught. So those are some key parameters that you just heard in this presentation. Because they're not waiting. And we tried to do our version of formative assessment. And in some cases, we're concerned that we shrunk down our formative assessments so much in Richmond now that our summative data may not be where we think it should be now, because our teachers weren't getting the feedback. I would argue that you've got to strike that balance between what's good enough and what's not too much, because you don't want them also overdoing it for like every other day they're testing. So that's just my two cents coming up to my last meeting, that you go this route. Those are some key words, I think. The fidelity, the commitment, the resources, the structure, the coaches that have to be there to support the teachers and not just, and the professional development time.
Hey, I appreciate it. If I may follow up. I think that's spot on. We, I think in your decision, jumping into anything wholeheartedly without pilot study data is probably not a wise way to go. And I think being able to select a pilot study, a pilot school or two to be able to implement that, that's pretty much how we've always done things, been the implementation. When RISD contacted me, I said, two things have to be in place. The divisions have to get behind the professional development, because you're absolutely right, Dr. Ben. It's that if you don't have a professional development, if you're not respecting the teachers by providing that, it can fail like anything else. And I don't want anybody to view this that opening this box is going to save anything, because it's not. It's going to be through the sweat equity of your teachers and your administrators, and for you guys, quite frankly. We do recommend pilot studies. You know, take a look at it, start small. Let's see, is this producing the results? Come back, take a look at it, then see what you want to do next. That way, we've just seen too many things, and our teachers are tired of this two-chill pass. All it got to wait is a couple of years, and this is gone. We want to get the teachers bought into it, get them excited, but we have to show the results. If direct instruction is not showing the results, then this is not the direction that you need to go. But a pilot study will show that. And so that's a really good way to be able to do the things that Dr. Ben has said to you. So I appreciate the opportunity. Any, any other questions?
No question. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Dr. Ben said. I know when Dr. Sapien went to Baltimore City, it was very, very clear that, yeah, you do have to have fidelity to the program. That was extremely clear. We had, we saw students who could go from one classroom to the other. And, and there was really no change. They were still, they were doing the same thing. They were strict with the program. I did ask the principal at the school that we, that we attended, and I said, hey, so if you are, if you maintain fidelity to any program, what's, what makes this different? And I, and I wanted to know, had she been involved with a different reading program? And she said, yes, many. I think it's just the, the, the premise of it, was the phonics with this program? And she said, this one was the most successful. But yes, you do have to have that fidelity. They have a coach that stays there at that particular school. And then I think every Tuesday, they come together, and they're looking at the data and talking to, and touching, touching each student, how I helped a student, how I do, you know, whatever. But, but you're, you know, you're absolutely right. And I think that, I think there are like around five schools in Baltimore City that are having really, really good success, or it could be more, with this particular program. So it wouldn't be, and this is just for us to start having conversations, that's all. Because, you know, when I presented it to Dr. Ben and to Dr. Ken, they said the rule of the board to continue to move forward. And so, and the board has to figure out, is this something that we would like to see palative, or we would like to explore further, if it makes sense for our community? But I think what I really liked about the program is that when successful, you don't have to wait two or three years to see the success. What I liked about the program, when talking to the principal and talking to other people and reading about it, you can see some serious milestones accomplished in a relatively short period of time. And we want wins, and you know, our kids need wins. And they, and we want to make sure they are definitely. And they're, they're winning all the time, we just want more. So, but definitely, yes, the fidelity to the program and be willing to, to be at it for the long haul to get that data. Because even with our community forums that we did recently, that's been one of the primary complaints that we've heard, we have program after program after program, and we're not implementing anything, and the programs end up sitting on the shelf. You know, and we just, we can't afford that. So we do want to explore things that we think are going to be effective and have a positive impact with our young people.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item?
The next item is 4.005, receiving update on the resiliency plan.
Board members? Prepare for our next presentation.
So as you prepare to receive the resiliency plan, there are really two parts. There was an integral assessment and review through really first school year in Richmond Public Schools and some of our challenges. Then we got to the conversation that we kicked off this year, where we tried to focus a conversation with our teachers and staff, specifically about trauma and the issues that were facing our school year, non-academic. And you need this context, as you see why we went to Child Savers and SCAM to ask for help. I think when we first came on, conversation happened about asking about this information. I know Ms. Young brought up, and I'm going to share with the board that an assessment was being done when I identified a tool for the team to use. So the team, you see, the commission is, was, you see their representation of the team. I assigned a cabinet member to serve as the lead. They had a team with Ms. Jones, his support staff, Mr. Mallory, our hanging officer worked together to go through a process to look at some of the things that were happening. But it's interesting to listen to this presentation, because some of that touches on here, about fidelity implementation, all the resources we had. And I would tell you, Ms. Page, you said the grant thing, the grants give us control. There are short-term fixes if we don't plan for long-term stability. And you'll see some of that. You got this in your weekly report, and that was intentional, because we're not going to powerpoint, death by powerpoint, with you. So we're just going to give a highlight with the benefit of the public. This is for them to look through all of the slides and see there. And then we're going to introduce our guests, so you can see, I'll share with this Cosmet, that someone else talked about pilot, that we actually got funding for a pilot program. So the executive summary is that the template that was used was a guide for preventing and reporting, responding to school violence. And I, you know, focus on the orange part, it is impossible to establish one plan that will work at all schools. They're different. So you look for a foundation, but it's going to have to be a little different. Violence prevention programs work best when they incorporate multiple strategies and address a full range of possible acts of violence in schools. And this is a shared responsibility. You know, additional benefits include following the lowering rates of delinquencies, disruptive behaviors, harassment, and such and such. Again, I'm not going to read all of that information to you. It's all in your board docs, if you got any weekly report. So what happened was the team focused on Section Two of the Guide, which is the Guide for Preventing and Responding to School Violence, the second edition by the U.S. Department of Justice, that asked them to use. They're in progress with threat assessment. They're in progress with crisis planning and preparation. Some of the planning information you also receive from, in your weekly report from Dr. Boyd. We're not going to go over that. That is possibly something you can look at in July, to go along with, she looks, bring forth the discipline data. But I would encourage you to look at it, because it's quite lengthy. They put a lot of work into it. So you better look at this like seventy-seven slides. So there's no way that you want that presentation and want to have a conversation around it. Does that make sense? You know, violence prevention programs, you know, we already heard that. So what was interesting is part of the conversation had to do with the previous climate and violence prevention strategies. And the one thing I want to mention, and I wasn't here for a lot of this, so Ms. Jones, twenty years veteran, I guess?
Excuse me.
But the main point here was that the non-sustainable funding challenge that existed, between a combination of the grants, between a combination that had to do with the bottom falling out in 2009. And I hope you can take a close look at a number of the programs and resources that were available to our school district and students, which we sorely need at this point in time. We're looking at the area of challenges that our children are facing. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight slides worth of previous programs that were available for our schools and our school division. At this point, because of safety and security, is one of Mr. Krantz, I wanted him to touch a little bit on, so you can see some of the numbers, or the disciplinary fractions that our schools are facing and dealing with. This sweet one here, he'll touch on a little commentary we talked about.
Good evening. As you can tell, this data comes together from, and we'll see a slide behind this one. It gets into more detail about, from a safety and security perspective, the incidences that we deal with on a daily basis this year compared to last year. But right now, as Dr. Ben said, this has become a catch-all with inside our schools. It's one that we really need to peel, peel apart, break it down and get it into the different categories, as you're going to see from a safety and security perspective, because it's too big of a number. It's got too many different things in it, so it's really difficult to try to address what the problems are based off of that, that data. But you'll see in a couple of slides what the detail is.
Good evening. We wanted to provide you just a snapshot of some of the work that's happening inside the Department of Student and Family Services. We work in concert with safety and security, but we kind of do some of the next-step work with our students in terms of providing interventions and other kind of preventive services. But just to so you know, kind of the numbers we're dealing with, we have, at the point of this data, which was at the end of April, we had been working with 177 students who've been detained, who've gone in and out of our local detention center. Many of those children actually go through several times, so we'll continuously work with them. But 177 separate children at that time. We had received 107 petitions of citing serious felonious behaviors of our children, which ranged from firearms, weapons, narcotics, robbery, those kinds of charges. And at the time of this data pool, 34 of those students were receiving home-based services, because their charges were just too dangerous to keep them out of our school population. We have four violence prevention specialists right now in our, we have four positions. We actually have three people filling those positions. At the time of this data, we had 414 referrals and touched over 1,000 children in terms of trying to provide some kind of level of intervention for those students. The other major area of impact that touches our climate is attendance. And at the time of April, at the end of April, we had completed 18,000 attendance plans on children. That does not represent 18,000 children, as some of those children kind of fumbled through our system a couple of times. But 18,000 plans, we tried to work with families and children to try to improve attendance. But that's just kind of the highlight of what we're doing.
If you look at the incidents reports, and this is a report that we get through our reporting mechanism in our safety and security area, and I'm not going to go through each slide, but our total this year has been 804 incidences, versus a year ago was 556. The incidences here, which are fighting, assault, battery, the type of things that we talked about within that 10,000, where we need to peel that onion back to really zero in on where our problems are, these incidences right here represent 71% of all incidences this year. A year ago, it was at 64%. So that really is indicative of where do we need to spend our time. Our challenge is on the fighting, the bullying, the hazing, and those types of situations we have. You can see, you've got all the different other categories, but they're very small. Our focus needs to be on the fighting, the bullying, and the hazing-related incidences.
I do want to make sure to point out that at the bottom of the green, those are instances that rise to a level to be reported to Central Office. So it doesn't mean that that's all that's going on in the schools. So I don't want you to walk away. That those rise to our level that we can know about in Central Office, whether it be Central Office of Police, Safety and Security Office, or it could be Assistant Soup, and then routed back, or depending on cabinet member. So it's not everything that happens. So you look at the former prevention initiatives, and again, I'm not going to go through all of it, but these were eliminated over a period of time due to lack of funding. And then there also were a number of positions that were lost in your budget process. You would have seen, if you looked at some of the budget cycles when we did an analysis, we actually have more students now and less staff serving. And that's reality. So we've got more kids, and we have more kids with more needs, because our issues have risen, the trauma and other things that any services were. So I'm just going to touch on the key ones. The Safety and Security Office, you see, it's actually smaller than what it was. We're getting more children that were serving. The difference may be, you know, looking at square footage and undercover, those types of things. Versus when we opened humanize, we had to shift staffing. If I remember, there wasn't, when we got here, there wasn't staffing allocated to upgrade the number of officers assigned to the building originally, we had to redeploy. Because the square footage and footprint became larger than what it was in our building, and that wasn't taken into account for some reason. But you'll see, the gang reduction, the day reporting, which was a place for those students who were sitting at home to go and actually get instruction rather than sitting at home. Community of caring, Eagle, and Eagle Gun Safe Program, they're still trying to buy those services with staffing. Eagle was a proactive, preventative, kind of mascot-type thing to care bad, develop that type of thing. We developed the family and community engagement with violence prevention specialists. We got four of them, trying to service our entire district. Therapy to day treatment, we had begun work trying to improve the quality of services in that model. It was tabled and delayed a mile and a half for you because work is being done at the state level. So Department of Family, Student Services Staff, and our team has been working with the state to make sure that our, the changes that are being made are aligned with the state, and that the state is actually coming out with some future decisions with revisions to that because it's tied to Medicaid program. So that could be vastly different. But we got some new direction. Big one part is Virginia Center of Inclusive Communities, they're doing work right now in a couple of our hotspots right now with schools. And, oops. We have a team going through Virginia Tier Systems of Support, which I think one of the initial districts that part of the video. Yeah. But we got the pilot part first, and then now we have to officially apply to see if we move forward with the funding and support of the program from the state. Probably heard about law enforcement intervention focus on education life partnership that was launched with our police department. OVAIS has been in our district for a while. The issues that we get in PPIS in various places, we have staff trained, but with staff turnover, that becomes a challenge if you don't keep it going because you give training, implement programs, but if you lose staff, you know, a couple of schools, you know, you lose a third of the staff, three years, you gotta maybe get a bunch of different people. You know, build sustainable models. You will hear later about that last one. We saved it for last, because it's really the focus, is the resiliency project. They may touch on it, but I will tell you, it was a half a million dollar grant, and that's probably about two million dollar program to get it running. So it's a pilot, but to give the services and the capacity, they really need sort of these kind of schools you see listed there. You're talking about a one point five million dollar deficit amendment, a delta.
So we use this analysis to ask the questions to identify our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, our threats that we deal with in trying to address the culture of violence inside of our schools, the culture inside of our school. The questions under the strengths is a list of what we use to generate, to identify our strengths and to identify where there was various opportunities that are in there. The weaknesses that we currently have, the opportunities we have, and where our threats are. We had attached to that the list of the strengths, which I'm not gonna go through, you have an opportunity to read that on your own. And we'll gladly answer any questions you might have after you had that opportunity. But this drives the discussion for the district in identifying how to address the challenges that we face each and every day. So we go through our strengths, we list our weaknesses, our opportunities, and where our threats are that we have out there.
So as I mentioned, that we have, the threat assessment is in progress, the crisis planning. And again, on the crisis, part of the plan process beyond the crisis planning, which is a plan of action. But again, Dr. Boyd and her leadership team within that department has sent you up some things in your weekly report. It's on the docket, I believe, for July. It would be more or less conversation if you actually look at it, so again, you don't have to have to have my PowerPoint type presentation that happens. And again, the link is there, the exact link, if you wanna look at the guide that we went through to go through this process. You know, the challenge that we face is just obviously about sustainable funds and resources. I think when you see the report that Dr. Boyd's team put together, that's gonna be a heavy conversation that needs to be held about funding, just like we saw about direct construction. It's gonna be about where you're gonna allocate the dollars and make sure it's sustainable for a period of time, that you actually have true data to actually look at and consider, you know, whether this is something you wanna invest in. Even if you get grant money, that just buys you time. If you find out it's something you wanna really use. There was a slide here that I wanna put in perspective, I missed it. That the district used to spend, we know at minimum it was three million. We did an analysis and we could not pull everything that was here before we got here. It was supposed to be five million dollar investment. And I think I want you to keep that in mind, that at the time you had fewer students, fewer challenges, and my money that was invested to a number of programs. And as you look at the plan that the team may be bringing forward, a frame of reference of what you were spending. And, yeah. The previous programs, they exceeded three million and may have reached at or over five million dollars in investments, was the numbers they could pull to support the program. With that said, the main reason you're here also is to make you aware that started just prior to your arrival was the resiliency project. And it's at the bottom, it's a part of the project to build trauma-informed schools in the East End of Richmond. Probably heard Mr. Albright plead to have that expanded. I gotta put it in context, they're more than willing to try to support, do more schools, it's gonna be a funding issue as a factor. Project received startup funding from the Robbins Foundation, about five hundred thousand dollars. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Jones to come and introduce our guest, and she works closely with him. Right up here, she's a tech.
Excuse me, Ms. Jones, we can, our student, Shannon Jones, she had to leave, she had a project due. Anything you'd like to say? Anything you'd like to share?
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, so we are now gonna transition to the RPS resiliency partnership. And we are very excited, I think this is a conversation we started maybe a year ago. As we started talking about some of the challenges we were facing in our schools. And we sat down with SCAN, Stop Child Abuse Now, as well as Child Savers, in separate conversations and then collective conversations. And then Dr. Ben came knocking on the door and said, "We need more help, we need more help to help support our children, and it's greater than what we can deal with in a classroom and ask a teacher to do by themselves." And so we pulled everything together and came up with this proposal that Robbins Foundation, I believe there is a representative from Robbins here, Mr. George, were able to review and approved us, and we won the grant for five hundred thousand dollars to kind of get started on this project. So without further ado, I wanna introduce our partners, I believe Robert Bowling is here. He's the CEO for Child Savers, along with Janine Harper from SCAN, and John Richardson Love, clinician from Child Savers.
Good evening, Robert Bowling, Child Savers, Janine Harper here from SCAN. And we're delighted to be here today to talk to you about the Richmond Public Schools Resiliency Project. We're gonna spend some time, I think it's important to look at this slide, this collaborative process, two nonprofit organizations coming together to really support the work that Richmond Public Schools is trying to achieve. And we're delighted that Robbins Foundation gave us the initial funding through its community innovation grant to pilot this project, planned for seven schools, but I think you've heard over and over again, the challenge will always be to raise resources to help. I'm gonna have a slide a little later to talk about the financing related to the, to the project and to give you an update on where we are in raising resources. Trauma. You've heard a lot about trauma in our, in our communities and trauma across the country and its impact on, on kids, and particularly kids and learning. And so our job is to help the school understand the social and emotional lens that teachers and other support personnel in schools look through in order to help those kids who've been impacted by trauma. There was a seminal study, many of you know, the adverse childhood experiences study, done eighteen, nineteen years ago, that really looked at the impact of trauma on kids and the impact of trauma on adults, actually. And we learned more and more about that impact on kids, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Janine to talk about the actual program implementation. You've heard a lot about poverty, I think Ms. Cosby was correct. Poverty is a contributing factor to what happens in kids, but it's not, we're still able to achieve even around poverty. But I think it's important to us to recognize that this is old data, I think the new data in Richmond Public Schools is that forty-two percent of the kids are at the poverty level. I think this slide is very, and it really talks about the impact of trauma. And I, I like using the talking dog, barking dog slide for a couple of reasons. If you think about children, if you think about children, but if you think about you walking down the street. This is, I'm gonna make it personal for you. And you're walking down the street, and say you're just walking with your kid down the street. Where are you going, kid? Where are you spouse? Where are you partner? And suddenly you hear a barking dog. Your brain becomes alert. When you go from this relaxed state in your brain to this. Because you're looking around and you're saying, "Where is the dog? Where is the dog? Where is the dog? Where is the dog?" So you're trying to locate that dog so that you can decide whether you're gonna flee, you're gonna stay, or you're gonna fight. And imagine this happens to children over and over and over and over again. That's the impact of the barking dog. And what happens is, you suddenly look around and you see the dog is behind a fence. And all that adrenaline that's built up in you to try to decide what to do suddenly relaxes. All your sensors go down, and you become more relaxed. Unfortunately, too many of the children in our community experience that trauma over and over again, that they are never able to relax. So imagine that kid coming to school. And a simple thing like, you're Mr. Young, teacher. You say, "Robert." You see me with my head on the desk, you're wondering what's going on with me, and you walk over and you tap me on the shoulder and you try to wake me up, and the first thing I do is jump up at you screaming, yelling. And now we have a situation with a child and you are in conflict. The work that we're gonna try to do is to help mitigate those circumstances so we can help those children learn. I think this is an important slide, because the community that we chose in the East End. If you look up in the, I'm trying to get this pointer right. If you look over on the right-hand side of the slide, you're looking at the number sixty-three years. And if you just cross the river and go five miles to West Over Hills, the life expectancy between those two areas of our city is twenty years. Twenty years, significant. And it's because of the, the impact of trauma, the impact of poverty, and the impact of conditions where children are living. And we expect them to come to school and learn well. I'm gonna come back to this slide in a minute, but what does trauma look like in kids? Pervasive feelings of fear and anxiety, they internalize all these negative beliefs about themselves. Trust is a pretty significant issue. But more important for school is this inability to learn, memory reduction, and attention span reduction. Those things really impact the kid when they get to school. Difficulty in managing their emotions. The ability to solve problems becomes more difficult because they're reacting rather than thinking through and being critical in their thinking. A lot more conflict with their peers and even those adults who have responsibilities for them in the classroom. Pretty significant stuff. But trauma also affects the school more broadly. It directly impacts those staff who are working with those kids. The children, the teachers, the support staff in the building, it could be resource officers, it could be the folks who work at the front desk in school. Significant staff turnover, and particularly teacher turnover because they have to deal with children who are coming to grips with the impact of trauma on them. The physical impact of school violence, and you heard it in the previous slides from Dr. Ben and his team, bullying, assault, and aggression against teachers are high-impact areas that are impacted by trauma. And finally, school climate, you all talk a lot about, what is this gonna do around school climate? And the work that we're gonna do is really help change that climate. And that change will take place over time. Really important to understand that it will take place over time. And then the impact of suspension, expulsion, and even death. Because we know in our community, and very recently we've had multiple deaths that have impacted children and families. And, and some of those children do not return to school. And their friends, their peers are coming back to school and having discussions about what happens. So we wanna change the conversation and help you better understand that the school system focuses in on the academic work, the curriculum, the instruction, the research. We're, we're focusing our work around school climate. And Janine Harper is gonna talk about that blue circle a little more and, and the three components of the project, and then I'm gonna come back and talk about the financing of the project. But before we go there, I want you to understand this slide. The project calls for us to work in seven schools, the pilot, that Dr. Ben referenced is a significant challenge. We know that we don't have all the resources today, the five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Robbins Foundation, the two-year grant to get us kicked off. But the project is well over two billion dollars, two point two million dollars we estimate. So we're, we're gonna start in the pilot stage in two schools, Monmouth High Middle School and Woodville School. And then as more resource becomes available, we're gonna expand and go to the other schools and identify the positive projects. So I'm gonna turn it over to Janine for that.
Thank you, Robert, good evening. So, you know, it's important to understand the impact of trauma, as Laura said, but equal to that, and we in fact think more importantly is to understand really now the hope of resilience. This project calls about understanding the impact of trauma, understanding what it does to children, what it does to their parents, what it does to our schools, what it does to our community is key. What we know now because of science, particularly in neurobiology or neuroscience, we understand so well now that impact on trauma, as Laura was saying. But we also understand very clearly the impact that we can make in terms of resiliency. So we acknowledge fully the impact of trauma, but we enter into this resiliency project really in spirit of hope. We really absolutely believe that collectively, we really can make a difference as it relates to children, your parents, schools, and ultimately our community. In order to do that, we think there's three primary initiatives that we will undertake in partnership with RPS. The first is professional development. You know, professional development can be a lot of things. And what it really means for us is working collaboratively with schools. That we come in with humility, while we are all experts in terms of trauma and resilience and clinical services and assessments and interventions. The reality is, is that we know that schools know themselves best. And in order for this kind of approach to work, we have to enter in humility. So we will work collaboratively with teachers and administration to help them determine what hurts the most, but also again, where their strengths are. We will also, in terms of professional development, bring the science, but also bring the concrete strategies that people need in order to help children again to learn to regulate, to help parents begin to engage, to help teachers be able to take care of themselves. Robert mentioned the impact of, of trauma exposure on the teachers, it's real. They are impacted when these things happen in their classroom, they're impacted when a child is out of control. And so how many of the work, much of the work that we will do in terms of children will mirror with the adults. It's really critical to do both and do it both levels. We also will, and so in terms of professional development, our plan is that we will do six professional development sessions per school in the schools that Robert outlined earlier in the presentation. They, in addition to that, we will also provide ongoing services related to coaching and consulting. One of the things that we know in terms of our professional development and working in many system changes through experience, that it's really important to be there in between. You know, if you go into a school and you offer professional development and then you leave, and you're, and you're not there in between, when that child isn't hiding out, when that teacher is beginning to feel alone, when that principal, despite their best efforts, is feeling like we just can't get this done, then, so we will be there in the meantime as well. Our experience in doing this in other schools has really made that quite clear, how critical that is. In addition to that, we also have one large training, as we did this past summer at the beginning of the school year, that again, will help teachers understand the science, understand the art as it relates to regulation. We also will help them with a really important part of trauma-informed education, which really is responding to need and not reacting to behavior. It's really a tough one for systems, it's a tough one for teachers, it's a tough one for children and parents. So we will do that in terms of professional development. We also engage in parental engagement activities. We work closely with ongoing efforts, a key piece of this initiative, again, with the humility and, and setting out the best opportunity for sustained change, is looking at what's going on already, what already works, and how can we put this lens on to help inform that in a different way. But also, when there's not opportunities yet for parental engagement, we will work to engage parents. We are setting up a stipend program where we will have parent liaisons who are actually part of the school to help inform the professional work and do that collaboratively. We also will offer Circle of Parents groups, which are a national model of support groups. They're very low barrier. Many times the parents you want most to come to school, the most difficult to engage. And so you have to offer services that don't look like services. And not in a way that is manipulative or artificial, but in a way that is genuine, but really does truly meet people where they are. So Circle of Parents is a model of that, has proven success, we operate several Circle of Parents groups. And the other beautiful thing about them is they really develop leadership on the parents. So the professionals begin to move out and the parents begin to take over. And again, an empowerment that is really critical in these kinds of activities. And then we also will offer workshops as appropriate in terms of trauma and resilience. And both our organizations do a great deal of that throughout our community. Clinical practice is key. We are going to, in our beginning phase, start with MLP middle school and also Woodville Elementary School. We will be offering onsite behavioral health services. We will be offering onsite behavioral health services, meaning that there will be clinicians who are highly skilled that will be embedded within the school, working collaboratively with staff, with therapeutic day treatment, with other services that may be there. But what will be critical about it is these will be clinicians who clearly understand trauma, who absolutely understand the power of resilience. They know how to work with parents who may be difficult to engage, often because of trauma themselves. They will carry a caseload of kids to see. And then they also will do groups as well that will help develop those regulation skills, those things that help kids calm down and be able to then be attuned and be able to learn. In addition to providing other resources for school staff and classroom observations as appropriate. So again, we'll phase that in. Over this school year, we'll be in two schools. And as funding increases, as Robert will talk about in a few moments, we hope to, we will move that out into other schools. Success, it is the things we all care about. You know, are kids there? Are they attending school regularly? Do we have decreased behavioral referrals? Are children better able to regulate, better able to learn, problem solve differently? Do we see improvements in terms of test scores and grades? In addition, do we see things feel and look and be different within the school itself? And schools across our country have done this well. You begin to feel a difference when you walk into the school. People feel safer. Safety is the paramount piece of trauma-informed care. And then ultimately, are we able to sustain it? We also have our own objectives in each of those three categories, treatment goals, how many parents are coming. Would have professionals say that they've learned pre and post-test, so we doing that as well. Our timeline, again, we'll do an initial training in September. We, or we did, I'm sorry, we did an initial training. And we will do another one this September, but we did one last September, as we said, for all the schools in the pyramid. We have been in an ongoing school assessment phase. Again, utilizing existing data, but then targeting it to areas directly related to trauma. And we will have the results of that by the end of this school year. And we just can be a focus group at MLK on Friday, we'll do one at Woodville to follow up. And then we'll be, as you can see, there are certain milestones that we'll want to achieve as it relates to getting the clinicians online and establishing that space with those schools. Robert?
This is, this slide is very critical. As you know, this is a pilot project for the East End to target seven schools plus the preschool center. And over the course of the project, beginning last September through June of 2019, the estimated cost is two point three million dollars. The one-year cost, meaning in the school year that begins in September, we're estimating where we would, to fully implement the seven schools, would be six hundred and fifty-one thousand odd dollars. And this gives you the breakout across those three categories. Now, in reality, today, we have for the full cycle of the pilot project, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Robbins Foundation. So half of that we're spending in the next school year. In addition to that, we just learned on Friday that Bonsacor Health Systems has contributed another seventy-five thousand dollars for the project. And so we're cautiously rolling it out that phased in, starting with Kinney and Woodville. And then next school we look at is the preschool, the preschool center, the Heston Preschool Center. But our design is to go slowly and learn and feed the project as we get more resources and we are able to better roll out to other schools. Let us be clear, let us be clear. Pilot project, funding is critical. We will do ongoing fundraising to continue to do this project, which you've heard over and over again. It cannot only be funded through philanthropic resources. We're gonna have to combine those fundraising resources with resources from the public sector. So that's the reality that you think.
So part of what you're getting now is with, on this aspect, is this needs to be thought about as you develop your next budget process so that we don't have to split up that process. I think your July conversation, we'll culminate a scene about some other action items and plans that you want to talk about, building into your budget process. You made up a call, and one of these I shared with you. There's gonna have to be some courageous conversations about where you're going to focus your resources, because there's going to be a lot of it as well. But I really believe that you're still gonna be challenged with giving, he talked about the flatness in scores. Some of that is because of this also. So the kids aren't prepared to receive the quality of teaching and learning. So you're gonna have to provide some tough choices about the whole child conversation that you're starting to have when you deploy your resources. And some of that is gonna have to be about the health and wellbeing of the children so they actually can focus and learn how to read and write and math. Because there won't be, you know, the resources. I think there has to be a conversation when you have your joint meeting with the council to make sure they're aware of this, because you got advocates there, or, you know, at least a couple of you about this. And then I know, like, Newville, this is a big interest for her. So there's three people in the world that. But I think the sooner they know about it, the more they keep that in their minds, that also in their planning process so that there's capacity built. Again, philanthropic people are trying to jumpstart it for us.
So when we were meeting, you know, one thing we didn't say, and we probably should have started with, is thank you. Childsavers in SCAN have a long history of working with children and adults who are a part of RPS. We love RPS. We think that you do a beautiful job of uncovering resilience in children, which is all of our jobs in whatever sector we are in. And we are really grateful for this opportunity to partner with all of you to do this. So, so thank you for that. But when we were in this conversation one day recently, we were just talking about kids' backpacks. And, you know, it just seems like such a metaphor that has real meaning for us as we're doing this work around trauma. And I, and all of you know it, it's why you're sitting here, which is, you know, the children that we're talking about, they come to school every day with a heaviness that is really hard to imagine. As Robert said, you know, they come with fear. They're, they live in scared places. They live in scary places. Someone once said, you know, their nightmares come in the day. And that's oftentimes what these kids come with. And we really, with you, want to lighten that load in a significant way. We want instead for that backpack to be filled with the brilliance of children, the hope of children, the happiness of children, the challenges of children, but not have it be just something that weighs them down and keeps them from moving forward. So thank you again for this opportunity to partner with you with anything that you got more.
Janine is right. Thank you. We think this ties very closely to the contact that you had with the mayor's office. And the city council is looking at trauma-informed family-based services, healthy physical and mental health development, and the promotion of parental engagement. So we look forward to partnering with the school division, the school board, to really move this project forward so that we can do what's right for our children. I think the message at the end of the day is, we have this great opportunity to create resilience in our kids. And the resilience is what's gonna happen in your life and your learners. So thank you for it. Thank you.
Are there questions or?
Will we have that in the fourth question?
I will say before, we also have John Richardson Love, who's the director of clinical services on the Childsaver staff, who could help to answer some of the questions.
Ms. Page?
Thank you all for this presentation. Good information. From the board's perspective, based on, you know, the data, when, when should we start to see improvements, you know, progress based on implementation?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start that answer. Go to Janine and maybe John to chime in. I think the initial phases are to do the training and professional development work that we have to do to engage parents. I think you'll see that activity happening in the next school year. And then the, having clinical services start in September. We'll have pieces of those results. For example, the work of clinical services, each child will have an individual plan that he or she will work through. We'll see some success there. But in terms of the attendance, behavior, and grade, I think we'll have some insights into where we will be in year one. We won't have a clear picture. And then I think as we tease out learning, when the project will start to see results in the outer years.
Yeah, the only other thing I would mention to you is, you know, part of system change, as you know well, is that the system has to be healthy enough to sustain the change, right? It's the hallmark of system change. And so I think that, you know, that's a big piece of it, right? And, but I think, as Robert said, I think in these individual ways, we'll see short-term gains. You know, parents more engaged, kids meeting these treatment goals, which means they're even more regulated, better able to cope, those kinds of things. We think that we will see teachers have more hope, probably get additional support as it relates to vicarious trauma. So I think there will be these, you know, these short-term gains. But I think in terms of long-term, I, you know, we have been saying, we think three to five years. It depends upon the cohort, frankly. Depends upon what else is going on in the school itself. There's some exciting and, you know, new initiatives that are happening. But there's also some real areas of concern. So, yeah, so I, I mean, I think that we would say three to five years. Some communities have said ten years. And I think it really depends upon, yeah, kind of a lot of different pieces. Will, money. Yeah. And it also has to work, you know, this is a part of something, but, you know, all the work that's going on in these communities is a real piece of this. You know, there's so many variables that will impact the outcomes. But as we continue to better work in communities, that will impact this. So, and I also want to mention TELP teams really quick. I didn't say anything about it, but it's important, is that one of the things that we will do is establish what are known as TELP teams, trauma-informed leadership teams. And those will be comprised of people within the school itself. So it could be various personnel that are associated in the school, and hopefully it's a pretty diverse group of people. And those teams is who we will really work with very closely because they're our best chance of sustainability. They become the champions, they're the ones that believe it even when it doesn't seem like it's really working. I mean, all those things we need for change to happen, especially in a system, you know, like we'll be in. So, so that'll be a big piece, and we'll be doing that next year, forming these TELP teams.
Ms. Page, an example of, or call it about what else is happening in the school. Those two schools have high mobility rates. So kids come and go back and forth. So that's like an example of the wild card, that if they're not there or daily get the treatment and the services, that can add to some of the challenges.
So the whole project, the pilot project is two point three million, is that correct?
Correct.
And five hundred and seventy-five of it is funded for right now. So are you looking for the public sector to fund the remaining portion of that?
I think it has to be a combination, it's a combination of couple legs. Some of the financing for the project will be reimbursable resources from the insurance company for the clinical services. But surely we would, we think the balance of the funding has to come a combination of public sector and private.
And then what would be the annual, in order to keep it going after 2019?
I think we've got a little more work to understand better what that annual number is. And we'd be happy to come back at some time and do about it. But I'd be not telling the truth, but I tried to estimate what it is.
And the reimbursement, that's the same getting, the Medicaid reimbursement.
Correct.
So professional development and parental engagement are largely unreimbursable, right?
Right.
Yes.
Just one more.
So I have just a quick comment, a good question, to go to your point, Ms. Page, about when we see outcomes. I think we're seeing the outcomes if we don't do anything to mitigate escalation and violence and the, all the negative impacts of trauma will only continue if we don't want to get proactive. That's not to put a negative as an outcome, but if we don't do something, we know where we're headed. All of us have said in disciplinary areas, it's been harp of it, because we can see that by the time the young people give to us the impact of trauma is really wrecking havoc in children's lives, and it is really generating for what's happening in the community. So I think that's something, I don't know how you can extrapolate an outcome by looking at the negative, if you don't do it, that's the reality of things. The other thing, I, you know, I wouldn't agree this, and I just still get it, and I just thank you guys for the overview that you're providing. Just to be able for us as a board to dive a little deeper, I would challenge us to watch the film Resilience. That really provides just ABCs of how this came about and what it really means. It puts a meat on the bone to this presentation. So I'd love for you guys to host, you know, an opportunity for the community. I know you've had some showmates, but now that we've gotten a little introduction to this critical concept, I think this would be a great time to really encourage us to come together again and really dive deeper because these aren't quick solutions, but they're critical solutions. And that concept of the whole child, when we get to our compact report, is really what it's all about. To those two guys.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Page. And I think the idea about hosting the resilience film is an hour-long film that will give you a really significant backdrop into why we're doing this work. I think we can work out opportunities to do community-based viewings of it. And we'd love to have all of you come in and fight your colleagues on city council.
And your administration. And I think it's just crazy for the leadership team to really get this, and that's one way to start it. And the communities that have done it well, that's exactly the pattern. It really comes down to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is four point zero six, receive a presentation regarding the draft and transfer fairs.
Good evening, Ms. Page, Dr. Seating Award members, Dr. Ben. This information you have received via the weekly report in detail, so if you have some time, I'll be brief here just for the public's sake to share with you the results of our transfer fair and our subsequent teacher recruitment fair. So the internal transfer fair was held the week of April seventeenth through the twenty-second. The way we manage the process this year was a little bit different than in previous years. We managed it online. We are applicant tracking system, which is called TalentNet. That is the HR software that we use for any applicant applying for a position with which to the public schools. And allow any eligible participants to schedule their interviews themselves online with building leaders. And they actually attribute with building leaders at their locations. And so some of the feedback that we heard prior to the transfer fair is that individuals were transferring to buildings that they hadn't either seen before, hadn't had a chance to experience, because the transfer fair in previous years was held in one consolidated location where all principals and those eligible would come and interview on one day with their building leaders. So they had the opportunity to actually visit the buildings in which they were interested in transferring during that process. In addition, the principals also use TalentNet to notify human resources of their selections. And so in order to initiate the transfer process, they were to use the online software, and that information would come directly to human resources to start the hiring process. So eligibility for a transfer includes three years of completed service, and that's contracted service at their present location to be eligible to transfer to any location. That also indicates the end of their probationary period, so that coincides with that. We received a hundred and seventy-four requests for transfer via the notice of intent. Of those requests that we received, there were a hundred and fifty-five teachers that were actually eligible to transfer. Of those one hundred and fifty-five, sixty-three teachers actually applied to transfer. After that process, we had nineteen placements, and you can see there were ten secondary placements and nine elementary placements from the fair. And those details about those placements were shared with you via the weekly report. After that, we concluded the teacher recruitment fair that was held on April twenty-ninth at MLK Middle School. There were a total of one hundred and fourteen participants on that day. Thirty-one walk-ins, and thirteen of those were interviewed based upon their eligibility, walking in based upon their licensure, and also vacancies that were available at the time. There were eighty-three registered participants, and so there was a total of and so there was a total of 96 interviews that were conducted on that one day. There were also licensure sessions and information sessions for those who were not qualified for an interview but did have interest in teaching and maybe had not completed any licensure requirements or just needed more information about how to become licensed and how to become a teacher. We had 33 building administrators participate in the fair on that day and conduct interviews. We completed that with three waves of interviews and walk-in sessions. The opening was conducted by myself and greetings from Dr. Bennen and our assistant superintendents. We also had information sharing from the Office of Professional Development and Curriculum and Instruction. Results from that fair, we did make 11 on-the-spot conditional offers based upon a licensure eligibility and feedback from building principals, and a total of 21 hires from that fair. This is a summary of those hires. So for elementary, for example, Gitter Park received three placements, Chiva Rosal received two placements, and so on. Woodville, one placement, Carey, three placements. And we were very pleased with the amount of spend applicants that we received and we were able to place based upon the results from the fair. Continuing on, Mouse Jones received two placements. Lynwood Holton, Stuart and Bellevue each received a placement from the job fair applicants. Secondary schools, Bouchal received three placements, Elkar Thompson received a placement, Huguenot received an ESL candidate, MLK received a placement. Once the fair was completed, we did send out a satisfaction survey to anyone who did register for the fair. We received 37 responses from those registered participants, which was a 45% response rate. I do have those survey results. They are posted on Board Docs, and they will also share with you via the weekly report. I'm happy to quickly go over them if you so desire. But that information is shared on Board Docs. And so this was, in our opinion, a quite successful day. If you've noticed in the weekly report, we currently have 36 vacancies, which is the lowest number we've had all school year. And so we are actively recruiting that still. We've been able to place not only candidates for this year, but many for next year, and we continue to do so, continue to recruit. That's just a really quick, brief update of the transfer and recruitment fair, so I'm happy to take questions.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. I just, can you provide some clarity, because you did mention in the weekly report, 36 vacancies?
Correct. So for this current school year, 2016, 2017, that's this school year still working, so that does not speak to 2017, 2018 vacancies.
Okay. So from the notice of intent for one?
Yes.
How many of those vacancies are we looking at for next year?
I don't have an estimate for you. I will once we pass the June 15 deadline. So understand, right now, that number is only including resignations and retirements that we received yet. It doesn't include any non-renewals that might happen. And you'll see, once you get to the HRD actions that might happen for licensure, those that are, have provisional licenses, that they haven't completed their requirements, and therefore will be recommended for non-renewals based on that. So those numbers have to be incorporated into when we stay with resignations and retirements. And so that, that number is forthcoming.
So where are we staying with resignations? Where are we staying with resignations and retirements? Where are we with that?
Just a really rough estimate, and this is not a hard number. It's right around 80 right now. Very rough estimate, so please don't take that as, as long, that it is right around.
Right, I understand.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Next item?
Receive an update on staff and based on the master schedule.
See Madam Chair, my bad, member of school board, Dr. Leonard wants me to say yours truly.
You're a good man.
He said we do it sometime to let your shot out. It's my pleasure this evening to just give you a brief update and bring out through the short straw, and get to bring, this is a very brief, very high-level update of where we are with staffing based on master schedules. We could spend a lot of time going into great detail of what we're thinking four, four years ago before Dr. Bennen and the team arrived, but we could real quickly say we, we tried to do it right for three years. Four years ago, this HR specialist met with me in secondary and said, we have 45 people over than what we need for school in secondary level. And so you may have heard conversation about two years ago, the lengthy process that took place. And we didn't do anything special, except that we said, how many students are signed up to take the classes, how many teachers need to teach those number of classes, and then how many teachers need to be in that building. So it's a very simple process to make sure we get the right staff into the right building, teach the courses that students are taking. So that's the approach we took three years ago when we began this, this process. The first year, in 2014, 2015, there was a, an overall reduction of staff of FTEs. When you think about, we think about FTEs, and we, you know, full-time equivalency of teachers in one position, and we reduced those positions over in 2014, 15, based on the needs of students. And that first year reduction was almost 20 people, around the neighborhood of 20 folks. That, the numbers you look, actually dug into it, there's one school that had nine people and paid for more than they needed. And so, you know, that, that's not a good way to reduce the funds, reduce our division's resources. So we made some, we made those divisions, we shipped them to people. We went through a lot of process and, and spent some time going through that process, starting in February that year, and took it right on through until around May and June. 2015, 16, as you can imagine, you did it the first time. You get better the second time, and things are tighter. Obviously, population is shifting, growing on the south side, decreasing on the north side. You've heard from our facilities, you've looked at those reports. You have a lot of things on your plate to think about with how we want to use our facilities. People go where the students are too. And we tell teachers, you don't have a job unless there are students to teach. And so, you know, the student attendance is, is, when we're contingent upon our students, our teachers having jobs. So when we look at our numbers in 2014 and 2015, 16, we saw about a two and a half FTE increase overall across the division. So we see, we're very tight. We've grown every year in enrollment, from 2016 to 2017, and just keeping a very high level. But we do not anticipate allocating new FTEs. We haven't come to you to ask for that. If we do come to you, ask for new FTEs, if we would, they're probably going to start in the summer or in the fall, once the real members come in. While we have a pretty good estimation, we have a proper, who we, one of our organizations that works out for the operations office, they give us really good estimates, how many students we believe we need to give in the building. And we have real course requests for real students in hand that have been in hand for several months. And those numbers are the basis for how many teachers we believe need to teach school. We also made a commitment that we do not split core teachers. You know, sometimes teachers will split some teachers between buildings, but we don't split math, science, social studies, and English teachers from building to building. So if you get to, when you look at FTEs, and the person in the school needs 2.67 positions, then that becomes, that person is there for three periods. And what you do then is reduce your, your class size proportionally. So when you drop and build the, actually form the schedule, you have more overall class sizes. Our goal when building the schedules is that no English class be larger than 24 students at the average. Most of ours come in well below that average. Again, we can spend a lot of time, go through a lot of details. If you're interested in that, we've done that rather well, it's been a lot of time down there. But it's a, the process that we use is basically to make sure we have the right people in the right buildings. We split elective teachers. So you might be A-day, you know, one day at this school, one day in those school, but it's obviously desired not to do that. You'll see that band directors, oral directors, art teachers, foreign language, oral languages, you'll see those splits that can occur in those levels. But we don't split our English, math, science, social studies teachers. So the long and short of it is there, is that we, you know, four years ago, students did not leave in June with their schedule for next year. Now students leave with that schedule, and that schedule's a very close estimate to these are the classes they want to take, these are the classes that we have staffed that building for. And, you know, without any significant change over the summer, we do anticipate that we'll be pretty spot-on for the kids who walk in the fall, and they have a schedule ready to go the first day of school, and then by sitting around and cat-carrying gems. The other thing that we have noticed, obviously, we're, you know, this week, there's actually meetings occurring of the ELL expansion on the south side, that we're now reserving the ELL of one students, all ELL services, not only at Huguenot, now it'll be Huguenot and WIT, so the south side, both will be full-service ELL schools. And our Elkar Thompson currently is serving the ELL center, and is going to be expanding to Bouchal. So we will see, see a shift of students from Huguenot, and we will see a shift of students from Bouchal, the students who are naturally zoned to go to Bouchal with. They will be attending there, and of course, that provides some shift of MTEs across, to take care of those students. We don't have any, any hard numbers yet as to how many people, but we anticipate coming pretty close to where we were, we are currently. And so we, and hopefully we won't come to you and ask for more FTEs in the fall. But that's, that's always based on the students that show up at the door.
So, Mr. Jeffords. So what's the anticipated increase in enrollment for the schools that you just identified? And is it just those four schools in the south side?
North side's getting smaller, and south side's getting larger.
Right.
Elementary through high schools. WIT is, we're anticipating around 1,100 students just over WIT. And Bouchal, we're anticipating some more around 700. Suburban study, make it with the suburban study students. So the, if you look at, say, both as a stack, and stacking shift to take care of those students, that's where you, that's where you put your FTEs.
Right. So we are preparing for the increase in student enrollment?
All the student schedules, all the students zoned, for instance, for Bouchal, all the students, the rising sixth graders, rising seventh, and rising eighth graders, they're all, if, if they currently with Elkar Thompson, or they're currently at any of the feeder schools that feed Bouchal, their schedules would all be incorporated in that number. So staffing is based on how many students we anticipate, including those students that would be attending Bouchal in fall.
So we are looking at capacity, you know, spacing, because, you know, with the increased number of students, anticipated classroom size, size, student-teacher ratio, because that has a huge impact. It could be negative with learning?
We have some really large elementary schools on the south side, and the goal is regardless of the size of school, to make sure the teacher-student ratio is well within our parameters. That's what we staffed then.
So we can have a sidebar conversation, because I would like to have more information.
Yeah, and we, there's a lot of, we did dig in there a lot.
Thank you.
Seven, seven, zero. Oh, next item, okay. Sorry, Madam Chair. Next item is 4.08.
Seven.
Seven, sorry. We added one, eight, it would be eight. Report, receive a report on resuming.
Okay, board members, we had two board members that wanted to start researching and work in preparation for the daunting task of rezoning. So I wanted to see, Ms. Dorr and, Ms. Minz Urb is not here, but Ms. Dorr, do you have an update to provide to the board?
Not at this time.
Next item?
Next item, Madam Chair, is 4.09, receive an update on the mayor's education compact.
Okay, Marcus Adams on the mayor's education compact. Ms. Dorr and Ms. Marsh Carter, do you have an update report?
Also, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Liz and I are actually pleased to, to share the report. It's just a few minutes. On behalf of the whole education compact team, and what we wanted to do is report on the progress since the last time we reported to the board. Our team, as you know, is comprised of both Liz and myself at this point, because we know the team will evolve over time. It is also includes two representatives from city council, including Dr. Mill and Mike Jones, representative from the mayor's office at Williamson's here, and representative is both the superintendent and member of the team. So it's been a great mix of team, just for the public to know, of people who are focused, indeed, on educational outcomes for our kids. Since we last met, we've had 10 community feedback sessions. Those sessions had approximately 400 community participants who came out. It was an opportunity for them to, to ask questions, for us to give feedback, and to really have an earnest dialogue about what the compact will mean for our schools once it's been embraced. The session was also an opportunity for members of our compact team to reinforce the fact that, as Ms. Care so wonderfully pointed out, we are about providing quality educational outcomes for our kids. That's the whole purpose of the compact. And what the compact recognizes is that, as our trauma team, our residency team pointed out, we can't do that in a vacuum, that it takes the whole child to be healthy and ready for us to have strong educational outcomes. And so we received the feedback, we're incorporating that feedback into the framework of the compact goals, and we'll be coming to the board ultimately with a resolution, both for the school board and for city council. I certainly want to rest assured for everyone that our commitment is simply to strategically invest in our young people. And we recognize that the whole child has to be supported in order for that to happen. So what I do want to point out is what the education compact is not about. It is not about charter schools, it's not about privatization, it's not about Teach for America. It is really about supporting our children, getting them the outcomes that they need. That's what we were elected to do, that's what our commitment is, that's what we're serving here. So it's very exciting for us to recognize, we're creating the Richmond Education Compact, it's not a Denver or any other community compact. This is about what our kids need in order to succeed and thrive. And so I've talked a little bit about what it's not charter schools, privatization, it's not Teach for America, I'll turn it over now to Liz to talk about what the compact will be.
Sure. And just to build off of the charter privatization, I think one thing that I recently learned is that when you Google Denver Education Compact, you come up with two results. One is the actual education compact, which is a cross-body partnership, has nothing to do with privatization or charter schools. Second thing that comes up, unfortunately, we did not know about this, and this has created some confusion, is a Denver Charter Education Compact, which has absolutely nothing to do with any best practice that we looked at, at all. And we did not look at Miami at all for any best practices. I know that's a model city for privatization, and not something that we are interested in at all. So I just want to be clear, I do think there's been a little bit, the unfortunate use of the word compact has created a little bit of confusion. Russell wanted to just briefly go over what we did learn from some of our community feedback sessions. One, we did learn that, overall, there's generally broad community support to increase collaboration between the mayor, city council, and school board, which is the ultimate goal. It's critical that future meetings in the compact are public, with clear distinct participation from the mayor and the superintendent, which we will be very clear about. That it's the responsibility of city council and school board to develop specific policy goals. School board will be developing that in concert with our strategic plan, or Department of Education, or whatever that manifests itself in our academic improvement. The education compact's goal should be to incorporate those goals and to be a policy recommending body. So not to set policy, but to recommend policy, to come together as a cross-sector group to recommend that policies be implemented. And finally, that the compact, the final compact should include representatives from the school board, city council, mayor's administration, superintendent, but also from our stakeholders, parents, teachers, the philanthropic community, funding community, et cetera. And so those are things that you'll see in the second draft of the compact in direct response to some of the community feedback. Right now, we've decided to kind of scale back some of the, there were a lot of specific goals in the compact, and we got some feedback from the community that we might not be ready for that. So what you'll see in our proposed draft version is three primary objectives. One, set up quarterly joint meetings between city council and school board, something that we've needed to do for years, decades. Two, to develop education compact, compact team, which consists of the individuals that I stated earlier, to meet monthly and to talk about how we can work together on our shared goals for the whole child. So and to develop policy recommendations that will ultimately be taken back to school board and city council for a full vote between the two bodies. And then lastly, the establishment of a children's cabinet, which is a And then lastly, the establishment of a children's cabinet, which is a commitment from the city of Richmond administrative units and Richmond Public Schools units, um, that are directly impacting children and families to meet together. And again, provide policy recommendations for school board and city council. So we look forward to continuing the conversation and, um, welcome. Any questions from the school board?
Can you, uh, send that document to Ms. Lewis? Add to, um, to add to, um, board doc.
Absolutely.
Next item.
The next item is item five, your budgetary items, five point zero one, receive the financial statement for the period ended April two thousand seventeen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and I'm reporting. Just for your receipt tonight is the monthly financial statement ended, uh, June thirty. Only a couple of highlights for tonight. Obviously, we are reporting on April, but we've already closed May. So we are at a point where we're getting pretty close to estimating what our year-end surplus will be at this year. So we're going to start talking about that early this year as opposed to late. I will say that, uh, in April, we were able to post the five and a half million dollar transfer for transportation. So as you look through your monthly financial, you'll see that, uh, the, the transportation items that were over budget no longer are. Uh, I think only two other items. Uh, one, uh, we're pleased to report that the anticipated, uh, oh, uh, under budget items with regard to personnel versus the anticipated over budget items, uh, with regard to non-contracted personnel seem to be improving as we anticipate. And finally, uh, the board had asked for some type of a different view. And beginning on page seven, uh, there's a comparison month, a year-to-date or year-to-date, just a place to start. Uh, it shows expenditures, for example, through the April of sixteen compared to expenditures, uh, through April of seventeen. Uh, and I'd like to ask the boards to please take a look and let me know how you'd like to change, approve this. And we are happy to make any changes, uh, that, that you would like. And again, this is just for receipts, so there's no action required.
Next item.
Receive for action the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen general fund, special revenue fund, and CIP budgets.
This one may take just a moment longer. This is in board docs, but, but I thought it would be easier for you to follow along with my next question. Uh, we'll put it on the screen in just a moment. Um, the handout is, you'll see there's a table of contents, we call it attachments. And I'd like to walk through, uh, what's in here and then we'll get into some of the details. Uh, you'll see the agenda items that we're going to ask you to take action on is on page one. We thought a good place to start was the two-page detail of the school board approved budget. Uh, we certainly have copies of that that totaled to three hundred and one point six million that the school board approved. But I thought just the changes would be the easiest thing. That's what we worked from the night that you approved the budgets. And that's on page two and three. And then on page four is the actual budget itself that was approved by city council, um, at two hundred and ninety-two million. Pages five through eight, uh, the operating and special revenue ordinance, while that may seem like overkill, there is something important in there I'd like for the board to look at. And then we've got the capital budget, uh, capital ordinance, um, on pages at ten to nine through fifteen. So if you'll follow along with me on page one, this is a recap of our budget process. Uh, we certainly, um, talked about this at length and we gave the public, uh, certainly ample opportunity to weigh in with regard to our budget. When we finish our discussion tonight, uh, you'll see these numbers may, may not look exactly, uh, the way that you remember. But at the very bottom of the page, uh, where it says cost to the district, you'll see general fund budget, two hundred and ninety-two million, two hundred forty thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars. That is the general fund budget, the special revenue fund budget of eighty-eight million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, seventy-nine dollars. The reason I totaled that out to the right at three hundred and eighty-plus million is that's the way the city's appropriation is written. So I totaled that so when we get to the ordinance, you'll be able to recognize that number. Uh, on the capital side, the, uh, the capital appropriation, the capital budget has two components. One, an appropriation for four point two million, four million, uh, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars to pay off our bus lease in, at the end of June. Thanks. And, um, uh, three million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars, that is a cash appropriation, uh, to the, uh, FY eighteen capital budget. And you'll see that total is, uh, seven million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. So when we get done, we're going to ask for three appropriations. One, the two hundred and ninety-two million general fund, a second, eighty-eight plus million for special revenue. And third, uh, seven point roughly eight million dollars for capital. Pause and make sure we're, we're together. So pages two and three. Pages two and three, uh, there, there are two different colors of highlights. I don't know if you can see those on yours and I apologize, they may have come out as gray. These are the items that, uh, that we all worked through and ultimately you approved. You'll see on page three, twenty-one point two million dollars. The highlighted items. Yes, ma'am. Uh, the, the very first, one, two, three, four, where it says benefits in the gray area, um, what was approved, uh, and again, uh, good time to pause. Uh, the mayor's or city council has the authority to approve our budget by our own. So what you'll be approving tonight are lump amounts, but what I'm talking through what you had identified as your highest priorities. And ultimately followed, what followed through the process with the mayor and city council with regard to the dollar amount to pay funding. So we talked about, uh, our highest priorities being benefits and salaries. Specifically, it was, uh, the benefits that are required, uh, VRS and healthcare, uh, the teach, the second year of the teacher decompression, uh, which was four point nine million dollars. And the two and a half percent cost of living adjustment for everybody that's not on the teacher scale. Aside from that, the only other item that was in this budget was two point three million dollars in the technology function. So a starting point for us to think about is what was appropriated, and we'll get there, is eleven point eight million dollars. Of that ten and a half million dollars was for salary and benefits. I think I did my math right. So, um, this is where we were, and on page four is where we are. And this might be a good place to, to spend a little bit more time. The very upper right hand, upper right hand of page four. Uh, the very upper right number, uh, on page four, you'll see, uh, two hundred and eighty point three million dollars as the budget for this current year. You'll see, um, our revenue changes from seventeen to eighteen, seventeen budget that we're, thank you, that's good, uh, two hundred and eighty point three million. These are the revenue changes that get us to what the city council appropriated for us. The city appropriated, uh, just over seven point four million dollars of additional funding. And the net between state sales tax and additional state revenue is right at four point four million dollars. The total of that is eleven point eight million, taking our budget from today at two eighty point three to roughly, uh, two ninety point two, or four point two percent increase. So what we're talking about is moving the budget up by eleven point eight million dollars. Of that eleven point eight million, uh, yeah, teacher decompression, the two and a half percent call up to benefits. In addition to that, the city appropriated two point three million additional dollars for technology. They've not, certainly not dictated where that would go. And in addition to that, I do want to call your attention to, as we look down the page, it says adjustments, existing services, exceptional education, uh, speech, OT, um, PT. And then, uh, our, our outsourced day school costs, these are costs that we've already incurred in our budget. And the school board approved, uh, the two positions at, uh, Benford for the president's council on the arts, as well as the position, the students at Code RBA. So these were required additions, and you'll see a little further down the page, it says turnover, attrition, vacancy savings, two point two million dollars. So that's what was used in the budget to cover those one, two, three, four items. So I'd like to pause and see if, if we are all at the same point. That the discussion at this moment, I hope, will be that we want to approve a budget of two hundred and ninety-two point two million. We're going to talk about the categorical appropriation that the city has given us, but of the total amount that they, that they have appropriated or put in their ordinance for us that ultimately appropriated next month, or at the end of this month. All, but the two point three million is already committed with salaries and benefits. Doesn't mean that that's where we ultimately have to go, that that's, that's where we are tonight. So I'd like to look to your guidance about how you want to work forward from there. If we're comfortable that that is where we stand with regard to the appropriation, salaries and benefits are first, recognizing we're covering these, these additional special education costs. And we also committed to the president's council on arts and Code RBA, uh, then, then our discussion can, can, for the most part, reside around the two point three million. And I will say that if you'll allow me to continue on to get to the ordinance, I think it will help us understand the context of what we're going to approve tonight. But are we all comfortable with where we are at this moment? Okay. We can certainly come back to page four in a moment. I would like to go over to page six. Page six.
Is that two and six?
It is, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. It's two, only half a city appropriation. We page numbered, let's hit page six. These are the categories that the city has appropriated for us. If you add those all up, it'll come, come back to two hundred and ninety, ninety-two point two million. So what we're appropriate, what we're asking for your approval and adoption tonight, um, is the two hundred and ninety-two million, uh, that is broken into these categories. The reason I say that is the two point three million, which is the unique item for tonight, is in the technology category. For us to spend that somewhere else, we'd have to go back to city council and ask for them to move that to another category. So that's where it is at this moment. There's certainly is, there is nothing in this ordinance that allows city council to tell us how to spend our money. We can spend all two hundred and ninety-two million however the board decides. But that's why I wanted to start with our highest priorities were salaries and benefits, and that's what's followed through this chain. And the unique item is this two point three million that's in the technology category.
Ms. Dorr.
At a later point in time, should we want to go back to city council and re-appreciate the two point three million to something else? Could we do that?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly can. Uh, and that certainly can direct the administration to, um, come back with, with the suggestions, recommendations.
Ms. Owen.
Just sort of a question out of the blue. Would, is this our data management operators fall under technology? Or is it, cause it looks like it just says technology, it doesn't say teach a laptop.
That the, uh, the city will, will not determine how the money will be spent. All they, all they have the legal authority to do is to put it in these defined buckets, um, and this is, this is the level that they can control. So to, to answer your question, I believe all of the land equivalent, but is this folks roll up under technology or roll up under instructions? Okay, so are they under instruction?
Ms. Carson.
Well, I have another question along those lines. So what about the four points two million dollars for the bus lease payoff?
Yes, ma'am, that's in capital. You want to jump over to capital now? You want to wait and talk about that when we get to the capital budget? Okay.
I just did a little bit of this.
Yes, ma'am, it's a good question.
Mr. Young. Thank you, Madam Chair. David. Please advise how many students we have in Richmond Public Schools. It's approximately twenty-five thousand. What is that number?
If we include, if we include preschool, it's about twenty-four thousand.
About twenty-four thousand.
Yes, sir.
And can you advise, if we adopt this budget this evening, what we'll be spending per student, per capital student, please?
I can't, um, we have a capital. It can be just a moment, I will.
Pre-K does, you don't count the pre-K.
Right.
With the state calculus.
Run math though. Probably about, um, thirteen thousand nine dollars.
Thirteen nine, thank you. And can you advise what, um, what any of our, what, what any of the other municipalities in the region spend per capital student, please?
Um, it fluctuates some between ninety-five and then ten thousand five. But, but I will also, um, put a caveat in there that, that we have about, uh, sixty million dollars of, uh, federal and state grants that are not available to our, our colleagues because of their particular, uh, their particular, uh, population expectancy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Marsh Carter.
So when you talk about the, the fact that we don't, they don't have those resources, it's because of the demographics, they don't provide the challenges that they face. So our cost per people would reflect a part, the trauma, the poverty, and all the other factors.
It, it would, and, and maybe another thing that I could provide the board would be the local cost per student, lo- local funding per student, the state funding per student. And then the other, the grant funding, if we can break it down that way, maybe, uh, maybe gives a little, a little closer.
Follow me, that's my counterpart. So what's an okay cost per student?
Sorry.
Do you just, I just wonder what's an okay cost per student?
Since you're required, Madam Chair, ma'am.
Mr. Young.
I think you would press to find any person in the city of Richmond, or perhaps even counties of Chutchville, Henry, or Henry, that wouldn't concur that we should, we need to spend more money than the counties. And I would be one of the first. However, I also would suggest to you that there are great many persons that reside in the city of Richmond, including, here's true, and that not confident that our students, our students, uh, first and foremost, are getting a big kind of return on the investment, uh, that, um, they, they merit.
Well, the, the.
Dr. Ben has a comment.
I, I would like to speak to that because in some ways, I'm going to speak for my voice as a taxpayer in the city and as a superintendent. First of all, we spend anywhere from seventeen hundred to two thousand dollars from federal dollars. So our cost per student isn't as great as people embellish all the time, that we're spending both. In many cases, some jurisdictions are getting more money from the state than where we are because of the LCI is out of whack. All the surveys that have come out, most of them said they want to spend more on education. So there has been data and surveys that have said that. And, uh, so I would argue, and then when you look at the bellwether report, they have basically outlined why we're spending more. Our administrative cost is probably the lowest in the region. So we're more efficient there. What is driving our cost is our buildings and our outdated infrastructures. If we attack those, we can reinvest. And that's where we would drive our cost down. Those are some of the, the really nuts and bolts where we can start at. Now, I'll end with this. It doesn't mean we can't be more efficient and effective, we always can. Big chunks of our money is that we are running forty-four facilities. We're about five to nine, depending on whether you do max capacity. We're about five to nine, depending on whether you do max capacity or operational capacity, more seats than what we need. And we only have four or five that are operationally efficient, so they're eating up a lot of the cost.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Young.
Point of inquiry, but thank you, Dr. Vaden. My regard is, is this the time in the process, pertinent to this conversation, to introduce a proposed budget amendment, or should we wait instead until David concludes his presentation?
This.
Wait. Thank you. I don't have a lot more. I will summarize with regard to the general fund. I hope that we all can take pride with this budget, that with the adoption of this budget, we will have the highest teacher salary scale in our metro region, and in some cases, significantly higher, potentially. High enough to move folks from their existing job to us, so we'd like for high-quality teachers to come to Richmond. Additionally, with, we're not there yet, but with the new salary scales and the addition of two and a half percent COLA, we're extremely competitive on the unified scale as well. We, we did have a 9-0 unified vote with city council, so a lot of positive steps occurred, albeit it was a little rocky through some parts of this, but when we got to the end of the process, this seemed to have a lot of positive components, and I hope we can take that away to our teachers and our staff and our community. That's it for the operating budget. I would like to just reemphasize one thing that Ms. Dor said. The 2.3 million that's in the technology function, I certainly would like to offer to the board that administratively, we will come back to you and offer suggestions for using that within the technology function, or other suggestions about going back to city council, about moving that to another area that you may choose.
Ms. Ballow.
So it's a little disconcerting, this gave a contingency reserves number at zero. Can you tell us a little bit about how we got there?
That's just, it's a, it's a category that the Department of Education, Board of Education, lists as one that could be appropriated. We don't appropriate a contingency reserve. You could, for example, there's fund balance policy, we don't have it on the agenda tonight. Certainly, there's something you could appropriate, should the city ultimately allow us to get through the path of the whole fund balance discussion. You could appropriate some fund balance on the operating side to cover maintenance, for example. You could do that. That's not a practice, not a typical practice here, so it's not unusual to zero.
So, so Ms. Myers, if you could also share with the board, that's a part of the next steps for the budget process, fund balance policy?
Yes, ma'am. In the, the weekly update, there was some selected information. Again, it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so I didn't, I didn't bring it out. But it talks about some history, it also talks about some comparative school divisions, about their, what, how they, how they address fund balance. And the city's fund balance policy is here, the ordinance that addresses fund balance, and our own sample fund balance policy. So we can bring this back to 19th of July, or whenever you'd like me to. Yes, ma'am.
Just FYI for board members, next steps with the budget process going forward.
Oh, and, and I'm so sorry, by July, if we want to have our conversation then, we should have a pretty good estimate of what's a year-end surplus is going to play. With that, I'll move to the capital budget, if that pleases the board. On page nine, it's kind of hard to see, it might have been a hole. This is the capital budget. You'll see that that was approved with one change, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, back to the question. You'll see the capital budget that, FY18 was approved at 41,576,022 dollars, and you'll see the other years, this is what was in the approved budget. You'll see right below that, the funding that was approved. You'll see just over 3.5 million that's approved for capital maintenance. When we get to the ordinance this time, we will, we'll see where that revenue comes from. It comes from two places. It comes from the sale of the Arlington Road property, and it comes from our own existing surplus that we talked about several times, a portion of that 8.3 million dollars. So the funding for this year is roughly 7.8 million, 4.2 of that is designated to pay off the bus lease, which has now come out of the, of the capital budget. That doesn't mean that we don't need more buses. Doesn't mean we don't need more buses. It's just come out of the capital budget, because this number is there to pay off the existing bus lease. So on the capital side, the funding that we have available, albeit only roughly 3.6 million dollars, it is all cash. So that's a little different than, remember, we had talked about the funding from the city over the last many years has all been 20-year debt. So some of the things that we've needed to use capital for didn't qualify under the 20-year debt financing, so that had to be covered under the operating budget. This additional will help us, because this is all cash funding. So anything that you determine or grants returns, even if it doesn't fit into a 20-year asset, this is cash funding. There's really no discussion about out years of funding, and I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. Before we go to the ordinance, it shows where the revenue sources are, and then what the appropriations are for, which is just a couple pages further.
Ms. Carson.
Ms. Myers, by, hey, I cannot remember, and you mentioned before, but just refresh my memory, by paying off this bus lease, what would be a net savings?
It's about a million dollars a year that we will no longer pay for the next four years, and we averred about $175,000 in interest.
Did those seem, or, sorry, did those seem to go back, are these really the, the?
See.
Yeah. So paying it off, the million-dollar savings goes back to the city.
It does. Probably the easiest way to see this in the information we have tonight is if you go to, back over to page six, on the appropriation or the ordinance, that shows the categorical appropriation, where it shows pupil transportation of 13.7 million, that number has been decreased significantly. In fact, it's gone up about 4.3 or 4.4 million. It would have gone up another million to make that bus payment, that bus lease payment. So where you see, where you see 13.7, it would have needed to be 14.7. So our, our budget went down because of that million-dollar payment, and the city gave us less money, because they, we didn't have to make that bus payments.
Dr. Vaden.
It is my understanding that that money was redirected to the rest of the position?
So I apologize, the chart, the chart in the capital ordinance didn't, page numbers, it is 14 and 15, so if you can look between 13 and 16, you'll see it. What would be page 14, at the top, it says city council amendments. And you see some kind of gray highlights. You'll see the first one, cash funding from the general fund, that is our own fund balance of 1.8 million dollars. Again, cash funding from the general fund, that's our own fund balance of 4.2 million dollars, and then cash funding from the sale of Arlington Avenue, 1.7 million dollars. So that's the 7.7 million dollars in the capital budget. And with that, I would look for questions, and I would like to pause for a moment and thank all of you for your hard work. I know this was a very difficult budget process, we've come in the middle, worked through probably a dozen public meetings, and to get to what, by many councils, is a good positive outcome. Certainly, we don't have money for everything we need, but a 9-0 local city council and endorsement by the mayor is a good first step. And I would like to thank Ms. Braga and our budget office for all of their hard work.
Yes.
And ask for your approval.
Ms. Young and Ms. Carson.
I'll defer first to, if you'd like.
I agree.
Madam Chair, I do have a series of budget amendments I'd like to propose for my colleagues' consideration. However, most of these constitute something the group reviewed in the month of March, so for the purpose of expediency, it's, it needs your approval. I'd like to offer all those amendments that I proposed in the month of March and block, rather than take them out of my time, just in effort to proceed with these. Is that?
He's just going to explain what it's, at this point, there's emotional force, he can explain what is, is amendments. Here you go.
And I do have copies, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Want to review, I'll disseminate half this way and half the other. But please be advised that, three pages, please be advised that you can discard number two.
Amendment two, or?
Correct, amendment two, amendment two.
There's only two copies, so maybe you can share.
We can do that.
Madam Chair, just a brief, again, because these do constitute the same amendments introduced in the month of March. First, I should begin by conveying that if all five of these amendments were approved by this board, it would constitute a net savings, annual savings of approximately $75,000 a year. First, $27,796 increase in tuition payments for Appomattox Regional Governor's School. That would allow us the opportunity to increase our enrollment. There, two, a couple of smaller jurisdictions have decided, for whatever reason, to reduce their footprint, and I'm a fan of Appomattox, familiar with the good work they do, and like to increase our scope there. Appomattox, that provides specifically for the tuition payment. Again, I encourage you to, you can discard number two. Number three, $61,000 increase, this constitutes new funding for principals' highest priority needs, at the risk of beating the drum one too many times, or beating that dead horse among priorities, among my priorities, regard providing principals more autonomy and authority pertinent to their buildings, and, of course, budget decision-making processes are just a part of that. This would allow us to do that, absent some of the oversight or strings attached that comes with funding from date of 10. Number four, $5,000 increase in funding for establishment of student ID pilot program. This regards an initiative that Principal Gielstrap is attempting to employ, kind of keeping it a high school principally to address truancy and the fact that we have a lot of students that are departing, a lot of doors to go and hang out in the woods all day. Number five, $500,000 or half a million dollars in repurposed monies to pay for professional development tuition payment to teachers. Specifically, this would provide a stipend of $200 to 2, 2,500 teachers a year to be spent pursuant to professional development in any kind of capacity that the teachers fund made the most sense. And then six, how do I pay for all these things? 669,000, 500,000 for, that's not increase, or decrease, excuse me, 669,000 dollar decrease in expenditures by achieving efficiencies and realigning professional development, specifically, and you have the document in front of you that this regards folding professional development department and human resource department, consolidating, for lack of better description, and achieving FTE efficiencies. Sorry, that took me a little longer than anticipated. So, Madam Chair, that constitutes my motion to block pertinent to those five amendments, if I may.
Need a second?
And, and Madam Chair, have a, another proposed amendment?
So we have to complete the first motion, and that fails for a lack of a second.
Right. And the second, the second proposed amendment, Madam Chair, proposes that for the purpose of adoption of FY17, 18 budget, will obligate Richmond Public School Board to identify and vote to approve in that budget year, instead of budget year, i FY17, 18, to identify and vote to approve in this budget year, no less than three schools to close and be consolidated within existing schools in an effort to right-size districts, facilities, but grant and provide for new capital construction. And Madam Chair, this is a new amendment, so you allow us a little liberty to explain what my objective regards, and it's not unlike our preceding conversation a few minutes ago, in fact, that we are spending significant, significantly more dollars per capita, and part of, at least part of that reason regards the fact that we have, we have too many buildings. We have too many buildings, and, and we have a lot of capital needs, and we have a lot of old buildings, a lot of buildings that need new capital investment. I'm convinced that, that we can do facilities smarter, but candidly, it requires and necessitates that this board show a lot of courage that I know all nine of us have personally and professionally, and, and I think it's imperative on us, on Australia, that we move with urgency and haste to address those capital opportunities. And one opportunity for us to invest real dollars in new capital construction regards consolidation, closing three schools, consolidating the generate, and in a year, understand approximately one and a half million dollars a year, that's pretty good seed money to do some big things. One and a half million dollars a year, one and a half million dollars more than what we have right now to invest in our, in our capital. So this amendment, again, just for the benefit of my colleagues, but also persons in the audience, would obligate us as a school board to identify and to vote in FY, in the FY17, 18 budget year, no less than three schools to consolidate.
So, Mr. Myers, and you may not have the numbers off the top of your head, but in closing buildings, and I understand Ms. Young said approximately, or?
Oh, approx, approximately 1.5 million dollars, would, would it approximately, this is sort of back and then out again stuff, but 1.5 million dollars in accrued savings, that could be reinvested.
So for closing those buildings, you still have to maintain, once you close them?
I'll certainly address, and listen, Mr. Krantz is here. Depending on the size of the building, obviously, high school, closing high school will save more, in one neighborhood, 700,000, middle school about 5, in elementary, about 3. But the big item is, like you said, how much maintenance is avoided, and what's, what's the maintenance that you have to have. It's minimal if you leave, leave a school empty, and of course, you want to find the best use for that school. But I would certainly look to Mr. Krantz to provide some more detail for you.
So, Mr. Young, there was a motion on the floor. We need a second in order for the motion, in order for us to vote, discuss vote on the motion. So the motion fails for a lack of a second. Ms. Dor.
I'll say what I said last time to Jonathan, when he introduced his first amendment specifically. I do think it reminds me that we do need to, I think we were all supportive generally of having a framework for introducing creative. I do think it reminds me that we do need to, I think we were all supportive generally of having a framework for introducing creative requests for budgets, and I think we should revisit that conversation, so thank you for reminding us about that. And I also think, I appreciate the initiative on taking action on our critical facilities needs. I do think that we need to act soon or rather later there, so while I'm not seconding these motions, I do agree with the spirit of them, and thank you.
Mr. Barlow.
I'd like to echo, echo Ms. Dor's sentiments, Mrs. Dor's sentiments to a large degree, but also to state that I do believe that there may be efficiencies out there when it comes to the operation of our schools. And there may be solutions there that can help drive cost savings, that really has to be driven by the needs of our students and not just for the sake of typing our belts. I do think that we have to be taking a look at what will have the most effective impact on the students at whatever school they're in, so that we can make sure that every student in our district has a quality, quality classroom to, to learn in. And I don't want to do it just for the sake of trying to save that one point five million dollars, that's not a solution that, that will drive the best results for this.
Ms. Owen.
So at this time, is it appropriate to make a motion to adopt the budget?
I think Mr. Young has a...
Yeah, just, just real briefly, thank you to all my colleagues and to your colleagues who spoke to, to my motion. Just to be clear, I, yes, and yes, I agree. My purpose in the one point five million is to invest those dollars back in the, in the bricks and mortar, i.e. new facilities, to address some of the fact that we have, because we aren't the capital city, we have a lot of old infrastructure. And needless to say, one point five... I risk disclosing too much, I'll have a lot more to say about this with my colleagues and with the public in coming days. But, but I, I expect us in 2017, 2018 to really be able to do some big things pertinent to this topic. Staff has been terrific on this top, on this topic, and I really look forward to moving the needle on facilities in a really big way and being able to pay, and being able to pay for it and partner with folks, I'll leave it at that, but thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Myers, process question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know there's been a discussion about the two point three million dollars for technology. So, adopt the budget, then have a discussion whether or not to direct the administration to utilize, I'll be needing what the two point three.
Yes, ma'am, the adoption tonight, obviously, would include the two point three million in the technology function. And then the board could certainly direct the administration to make suggestions through the superintendent, obviously, for uses within the technology function, or to go to city council. If there's, the board approves uses that are in a different function, they'll ask them to move those dollars somewhere else.
So, Ms. Cosby, do you hear?
Yes, just one, one quick question, and is in keeping with what Ms. Dawn, what Ms. Page, they asked in terms of our leeway with this four point two million dollar bus lease, paying off that, is there any leeway with that? Because that's not what the board originally voted on. And, and so, do we have any, what are, what are our options of any?
Yes, ma'am, it's a good question, and one, similar to the money that's appropriated in the current year budget for Overby Shepherd. There was money appropriated in the capital budget to be used at Overby Shepherd. And the discussion ensued about, does city council have the legal authority to appropriate money for a specific purpose, and is not. However, I, I will offer that if the money is appropriated for something specific like that, I certainly would think that, that our school board would want to talk with city council if there was a different, a different use for very specific appropriation from it.
And so what you're saying is that we would have to go back to city council and say we request to use this money or a portion of the money or what have you, for another purpose?
I, I don't want to weigh in on legal, I'll, I'll look to our attorney, but I certainly can offer, offer thoughts. I'll look to a joint discussion.
Well, no, I think that what Mr. Myers was just simply saying is that while legally, council cannot dictate what the school board spends its funds on, if there is a specific, and I guess the, the history of specific appropriations for specific purposes outside of the two, you know, the, almost three hundred million dollars of the general fund budget, to have a conversation with council about any deviation of using it, I don't know where that conversation would go or, or what the ramifications of, of that would be politically. But at the same time, I think what Mr. Myers is suggesting is to just have a conversation with, with council about, while you appropriated it for X, our, our plan or our wish and desire and our action would be to use it for Y.
Yes, I will, I will offer, I will offer just a finance response. It's roughly a ninety-one thousand dollar per month payment on that bus lease. So the, the four point two million is to pay that remaining balance as of June thirty, pay that off, so we don't pay the ninety-one thousand per month.
Ms. Owen.
So, I move that we adopt the general fund budget as proposed for fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Ms. Owen, I think it needs to be to adopt the 2017 eighteen general fund special revenue fund and CIP budgets.
Oh, it has to all be in one?
Oh, you're looking there, okay.
I was, I was doing a wonder.
Okay, so.
So I was just going for the general fund budget.
Okay. Okay. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen general fund budget.
So, it's a good fail for lack of a second.
So it's been, it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Cosby to adopt the 2017, 2018 general fund budget. Any discussion? Seeing that we have none, hard question.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven.
So, next item, I mean, not the next item, special revenue and CIP budget, so we need a motion.
Then I move that we approve the special revenue and the CIP budget, we have a fund budget as well.
Adopt.
You said adopt versus approve?
Yeah, approve. And we've already...
All right, adopt, whatever. Make it work.
We need a second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Barlow to adopt the 2017, 2018 special revenue fund and CIP budget. Any discussion? Ms. Dor.
So if we adopt this, there's no option than to go back to city council about the capital budget situation?
I can address that. Certainly, there's no requirement to spend money, you're just adopting to appropriate the funds. You can certainly have a discussion all that the board would like. You're, you're simply accepting the money and putting it on the books.
I'm gonna ask if you...
Oh, Ms. Marsh.
And if we put it on the books, we have to spend it that way. I know that's why we tried to answer that, that's why it's still not clear.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to spend it that way, and we don't, don't have to spend it.
We can spend it in other ways. We'd have to get...
The board would have to direct the administration, either one to, either we go back to council and request the use of the funding in other ways. Ms. Dor.
Sorry, I've heard, though, that they were just gonna write a check without a B, so there's not, that's, that's just a rumor that I heard.
The way this ordinance is written is they are going to appropriate this money to us, so the budget will be on our side of the house.
Hard question.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven.
So, next steps. Is it the board's pleasure to direct the administration to come back for other use with the two point three million dollars for technology and the bus lease? Ms. Cosby?
Yes. You said it's the board's pleasure to...
Yeah. So we're talking about the two point three million dollars in technology for other use of that money.
But shouldn't we wait till we know what else we want to spend it on, or just go and ask for it, just give it to us?
We're just directing the administration to come back for other use of the two point three. Ms. Cosby, and then Dr. Beck.
Right, okay, I'm just, I agree with Linda, that, I mean, Ms. Owen said definitely, we do need to have a discussion about how we would like to spend this, because I think it would be, that's part of the argument.
Okay.
And why do we want, is it because we want to invest more in child favors and the pilot program that's going forward? You know that we have, and we've been saying it over and over and over again, and we said it, well, we initially said it, we were not going to vote for, we were not going to have four point two million dollars for the bus lease, because there were certain things that we knew we needed to work on immediately for the school climate and culture, I thought. So, yes, we, maybe we need to just figure out when we're gonna have that discussion and work through that, and then, and before, from there, we could request to the council.
And? Ms. Dor.
I completely agree with what we just said, and I would add that as part of that discussion, we should talk about the fund balance strategy.
Okay. Dr. Beck.
Ms. Cosby actually touched on it, I was just gonna suggest the question board give serious consideration as you look at the two point three to allocate some of that money towards your resiliency project. As far as your consideration.
Ms. Cosby.
Absolutely, and also, we are expecting another presentation on school climate and culture, correct, in July?
There, I will reference that you have a large document that's for you to review, and then as part of July is your discipline data, and that would be where a Dr. Boyd would try to share that document, but I encourage you, so you have depth by my own point to look at it, because it's quite...
Absolutely, I'm just saying, I know that there's some dollar amounts...
Yes.
To something that you might need to set.
You, you have that, so if you want to, if you want to wait till July to factor that into your thought process, you have that document that has dollar amounts that you could still have a conversation to add to this conversation if you didn't know that, until the July presentation.
Ms. Owen.
And I would also say that we all know what this best fellow tells we gotta do, too, so let's, let's wait a little while before we go forward with that.
Mr. Myers, thank you, and your team, Ms. Braga, Ms. Fain, and Ms. Anderson, thank you all.
Let her have the evening off, thank you.
Thank you for your, for your hard work, greatly appreciate it. Next item.
Next item, Mr. Rashid, for action of 2017, 2018 tuition, I'm sorry, meal tuition and allowance.
So, again, these are our rental, proposed rental rates for, for the upcoming year. We may change this a little bit and put this part of budget costs of the upcoming year quickly walk through these and then ask for your approval. The tuition rates at the top, you see the regular day tuition, this is someone of the county school division from outside, we have very few of these, but should, should we allow that? We calculate based on a local share of funding divided by our students, and we calculate that every year as a set calculation, as well as exceptional education, we take the total cost of the phenomenal exceptional education divided by the number of exceptional excellent students. And you'll see the remainder of our rates, both tuition, our meal rates, again, all that students eat breakfast and lunch for free, these rates are simply for a second meal for an adult in our building rental uses, and you'll see across the board all of the, the different costs that we have for our building rentals. I work with Mr. Krantz and his folks with regard to our school food service, security, maintenance, and operations. And we feel that these prices should not change for next year, or these costs, the public should not change for next year. So there's, thankfully, no changes from the current year, but these are something that we are required by the state of Virginia to come to the board and ask for your approval for these specific rates, so they're before you can I agree with it.
Mr. Young. And Dave, you may not be prepared to address this, because this is getting into the weeds, but I'm just curious, do you have any idea, just real ballpark, how many of our athletic fields are rent in an academic year or in a budget year, let's stick with that, how, how many are rented? And not just fields, but I'm referring to our gyms, so any athletic facilities?
Probably less than twelve days during the whole year.
So, and thank, thanks for my time. So I, so I share that, say, I don't think that this cost structure represents anything prohibitive, but I would hate it if my facilities at VSU were utilized outside groups that infrequently. And again, I'm not so naive as to point my finger at this cost structure. But at the same time, I can't just approve this, this, this document considering the fact that they're being utilized. So I would, I would inquire of staff before I go propose anything crazy, what the, well, if, if there are any hardships that I'm just ignorant of in eliminating the rental fees, because I understand persons that use facilities would still be obligated to use the safety and security officers, is that...
Right, but now, when I say you're outside groups, we don't count, I might count any ones that are using on after-school, part of, you know, our extended days, our academic programs, some of the ones that we do within the summer programs. Because when you look at everything that we do within our schools... there's not as many days that are really available.
That's one of the big limitations.
Right. The other thing that the limitation is the state of our facilities. Um, when we start getting into, I mean, I'm just being honest. Um, so you're not going to go, for example, to, we don't have them coming and saying, I want to go to New York or, uh, or I want to go to Armstrong. Um, we have groups that, that John Marshall, but then John Marshall doesn't have lots. John Marshall doesn't have a press box. Um, so when you look at our, you know, our facilities, really from the, from the state football, it's Ugnat. When you get into the basketball arena, most of our gyms are in the five hundred to seven hundred fifty capacity. So if you have any kind of an event that you anticipate a significant number, it's either going to be Ugnat or it's going to be the Arthur Ashe Center. Arthur Ashe, um, is one during the summertime. We right now, knock on wood, the air, the air is up and running. But, you know, that's a facility that we have struggled time before I, I started here where we didn't have the air. So in the summertime, it was difficult. During the fall up through basically the middle part of Mar- April, uh, we're doing our indoor track, we're doing our wrestling, then we're doing big, large basketball events. So it's just, I think, you know, we have to look at the days that there may not be as many out in the country.
Thank, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. That's a lot of variables. Um, can you address, is, is my assumption correct in that if, for example, an AAU team wants to use Ugnat, um, would they be, what are the circumstances that would necessitate uh, safety and, uh, safety and security officers?
Third parties that are be inside of, so if a, um, if an organization like the Police Athletic Club, for example, that we partner with at Henderson.
Yeah.
Um, when they're doing their practice, they're doing their events, we don't provide. Now, if they were to sponsor a tournament and they're going to have paying guests coming into the building, that's when we would coordinate with them on some security, either through our own security force or through RPD, depending on the number of people.
Thank you. Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
Ms. Young, last question because we are behind schedule and.
Not a question, but I propose amendment out. I propose that we eliminate any, uh, any fees to use the space. Uh, and, uh, and instead, uh, instead, uh, just rely on safety and security officers for athletics.
Okay. But we do have custodial, which is an out of pocket expense. So we want, I, I don't think you want to take those dollars out of general.
Mr. Grant. Sorry. And I think attorneys, you can't even do it that way. You have a complete policy that's already worded. So you can't just make an amendment like that, uh, Mr., sorry, Ms. Young. We've got a policy that needs to be addressed to do that, uh, just make it where.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Cosby.
And this is a little outside of this, very, very quickly. So part of our policy is that we don't rent to, if someone is charging, I mean, if somebody is.
For profit.
For profit.
Right.
Right, for profit.
That we, we don't allow, like somebody wants to sell something in our building.
Correct. Well, unless they're a nonprofit requiring to go in the building, you know, to do something.
Unless they are nonprofits.
Correct. A 501(c) group.
If I can, if I can help, I thank you, Lord. One of the quirks that may get to a little bit of Mr. Young's issue, that is a little prohibitive statement, I can't remember wording, where we probably may not be getting some revenue that probably needs to be looked at because it is exclusive. I mean, we have covered it.
Right.
And it includes a group where nonprofit who's, who is fundraising will still pay certain fees, but to a certain extent, it doesn't exclude for profit. Where they could be paying, we could be charging market value possibly if our facility met their needs. So there's a place where you might want to look at revising your policy with maybe also another inhibitor. Where we could get outside, more outside usage.
So for example, say Dominion wanted to use Ugnat and wanted to fundraise for the benefit of RPD. Under our policy, you could, we have to do it.
But a nonprofit.
That hasn't come up. I'm just.
But a nonprofit can do it. And does it have to be for benefit of RPD? I mean, can they just do it just because they're, you know, they're trying to, they're using us to fundraise for, they're renting the, the building?
They, we've had that just recently, I had to intervene. If you are, have a designated nonprofit status and show evidence, then you could use it to raise money for that recognized nonprofit.
I guess.
Because I think we just dealt with that where I got.
Yes, sir, we did.
Mumper, Mary Mumper was being used.
Okay.
Like that. But it has to be, but to, the ruling I had to give was you had to have the actual nonprofit status. So it's not just me or Tommy determining whether you are nonprofit or cause of onset.
Okay.
So board members, in light of the conversation, um, around this topic, it sounds like we need to revisit the policy.
But, or now, can I move that we approve this? Right, it's captured.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
So it's been moved and seconded by Ms. Owen and, it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Barlow to approve the two thousand seventeen, twenty eighteen meal tuition and rental rates. Any discussion? Hard question.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Saffini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven.
Next item.
The next item is to receive for action the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen salaries schedule.
And Chairman, Chairman, and Member Board, um, I believe you received a copy of the proposed seventeen eighteen salary schedules. There are a tremendous number of folks involved with getting to this point tonight. Uh, while this is something that happens every year, salary schedules are adjusted uh, for a variety of reasons, uh, this year is unique in that this is reflecting the, uh, the findings of the outside consulting group, um, that we had engaged about two years ago to help us work through, uh, changing our unified pay scale. They also assisted in a somewhat a way with the teacher pay scale. What you see tonight, uh, is the, uh, the implementation of those changes. We aren't completely done, but we are far enough along that we're able to implement a new grading schedule, a, a new, a set of job titles, a new set of job codes. We also were able to implement uniform steps within our, our grades. So, uh, I'll walk through quickly, uh, just what's in here. And then I'll, I'll ask Ms. F to, uh, to step in and talk about, uh, next steps and how this affects the reelection list. So on pages, uh, you'll see page one is your table of contents. On page two through six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Through page twelve, you'll see these are all of the old job titles and previous grades compared to the new job titles and the new job grades. Something that's probably more important though, is if you look at the next grouping pages, um, thirteen through twenty, uh, what you'll see are the grades themselves and the job, the jobs that are categorized as similar graded jobs. You'll see the hours per day, the days per year, and whether they are exempt from overtime or not. Uh, so this, while this is technical, it represents literally thousands of hours of work to get to this point. And we are delighted that we were able to bring this to you tonight. Now, um, from a cost perspective, we're still talking about implementing the second half of the teacher decompression and the two and a half percent unified, uh, pay plan increase. Uh, this is simply the mechanics of how we get there in the attempt to create equity within our pay scale and equity within our region. So these are the changes on the unified pay scale. Page twenty-two represents the actual implementation of the second half of the teacher scale that reflects the, uh, teacher decompression. And just so, so we'll put some numbers out. The, uh, the average teacher increase from the current year and next year, now that this is approved, is over eight percent. Far exceeds our neighbors over the last two years. Uh, again, uh, something that is very new that our folks have, have not seen before. Pages twenty-three through thirty. Um, this actually shows that regardless of the number of days, the grade that you're on, the number of days that you, that you work per year and the number of hours that you work per day, this is a true unified pay scale. Represents Henr- or, uh, it's very similar to what Henrko was called. Um, in fact, we fashioned it that way. So, um, this is, um, we did, give, give them credit where credit is due. Um, but this is our new thirty-seven step pay scale. Um, and it, again, it is uniform, uh, and, uh, it is, uh, consistent across the board. Behind that are the supplement pay scales. Uh, we did increase the, uh, the substitute pay scales by two and a half percent. All of the other scales remained the same. And I will say that the reelection list that you will consider next, uh, the, uh, the amounts that are in that reelection list are based on these scales. Uh, so we, we will need your approval of these scales before we can move to the next agenda item.
Need a motion?
I would love to make that motion. I move that we approve the new unified pay schedule.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Door to approve the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen salary schedule. Any discussion? Hard question.
I realize that this is the call for discussion, but I do want to commend our team for their, uh, hundreds of hours of work, if not thousands of hours of work putting this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Saffini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
The next item is to receive for action the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen reelection list.
Good evening again. And so, um, I, you have behind you, uh, just listen to you. The, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen reelection list, as Mr. Myers stated, this reelection list does include, uh, changes to the unified pay scale. It does include increases to salaries, um, for the second half of the decompression as well as two and a half percent, uh, increase for those not in the teacher salary scale.
And these are numbered, so we will be collecting them.
Correct. And so what you'll find is every, every employee who's in the standard of industry at this time is, is on this list for reelection for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Ms. Young.
Madam Chair, I have another point of inquiry. And this may be addressed by our attorney, I'm not sure. But is there, is, is there an opportunity, if, if it was the will of my colleagues, to set, to segment the list and specifically to separate out persons in, in the cabinet and in leadership? Well, not, my, my question, my, my question regarding, uh, in aggregate, can we separate out from this list persons in the cabinet and leadership position? Not specifically in persons, but.
So we don't, don't take action in the closed session?
And Madam Chair, I would move that, um, we table this conversation and continue to close per our counsel's, uh, our attorney's counsel.
If there are questions about specific individuals, then yes, we can have conversation in the closed session. We're talking about specific individuals who are part of this.
Legal. Myers.
My understanding is that based on where I believe Mr. Young's question is and, um, one of the questions that I was just fielding, um, that we would need to go into close to discuss this.
Uh, Madam Chair, I propose that we table the conversation until the closed session to continue the conversation pertinent to, uh, receive action twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen reelection list.
So is that a motion?
It could just be. Is that a consensus? Their consensus to.
Okay. So. Yes, next item.
The next item is to receive for action the student contract. Right. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Ben, school board members, I would present to you the final revisions for the student contract responsible ethics, also known as the score documents. The first draft for the two thousand sixteen, sorry, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen score was presented to the school board on March sixth, two thousand seventeen. Revisions from the March sixth meeting were completed. And the second draft was presented to the school board on May the fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. And based upon feedback from the May fifteenth meeting, the final revisions are listed that you all have received, the document, the score document. So just some things that I want to highlight. In review of the score document, we realized, um, that we had to make some changes to the levels for bullying and cyberbullying. So based upon a, um, school board policy eight three point three, the consequences for incidents of bullying shall be consistent with those for assault and battery as described in the standards of student conduct. So therefore bullying also be one. The current levels are one through five. So the proposed change to make it concurrent with assault and battery would be to change to level four and five. And the same for cyberbullying, to change that from levels one through five to levels four through five. Uh, additional changes for fighting the essay one code, um, that is no longer recognized for the discipline crime violence report. So we are reporting to remove that from the levels. Also, fighting minor injuries, essay two, that was currently at a level two to three. We're proposing to change that to a level three because as Mr. Grant spoke earlier, fighting has become an issue in our schools. So we need to take a, a larger stance and embarrass that. Um, also some things that feedback from the May fifteenth meeting was adding community service as an intervention for level one and two violations. We also included skill reinforcement modules and activities as an intervention for options for level one and two. We also changed the wording and the dress code policy to reflect gender neutrality. The suspension appeal, that became a concern as far as the amount of days. So that was changed back, um, excuse me, from three days to five days. And then finally, uh, the last suggestion from the previous meeting was to make the signature pages one document and to include that at the end of the original document.
I move that we accept the revised score line.
So you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Cosby. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young.
First, I really commend, uh, Ms. Dalton on the changes pertinent to bullying. As recently as today, I had a mother call me and convey how bullying, cyberbullying specifically constitute the impetus for much greater problems. And if it's not every day, it's almost every day that I'm the receipt of a phone call or email regarding this topic. And so I want to share publicly, I really commend your staff for entry. And so, I want to share publicly, I really commend your staff for increasing the consequences for bullying and for cyberbullying. Madam Chair, do you have some additional amendments for consideration?
Ms. Dorff?
Just a point of clarification on the process. If we approve this, is there opportunities throughout the year to amend score? Or is this set in stone then for the next year?
Mrs. Edley?
Basically, what you approved tonight will be sent to print.
Okay.
And so, as the year goes on, if there's a need to amend, if that's the pleasure of the Board, then certainly we can do that. But then we'd have to work on how that gets disseminated to the parents. But whatever is printed tonight, excuse me, approved tonight, will go to print.
Okay.
Ms. Dorff?
Yeah, my little pet project is on the dress code. I appreciate the efforts that y'all made. It didn't, for me, it didn't go far enough. So, I would like to potentially do some research and get back to you guys. But that's my pet project, so I'll take that upon myself.
Mr. Barlow?
I would like to move to amend the score. I think there was one comment that I made that was likely inadvertently left out because I know that you guys put a lot of work into this. And that was just to ensure that for section seven, S. one B, that says that students' attire and appearance should not be indecent, cause any disruptions. I wanted that to reflect any substantial disruptions or distractions in the classroom.
So, Mr. Barlow, is your amendment to the motion? Dr. Moore?
Thank you, good evening. Mr. Barlow, we did engage in conversation regarding the term substantial. We kind of went back and forth because of this objective nature of the term. Without the term or with the term, it's one principle, they say that it's substantial in terms of its distraction, in terms of the student's dress. If someone was revealing parts of their body, or someone was revealing underclothes. And another person may debate, a parent may say, well, what the term substantial? So, that's why we kind of waffle back and forth. Certainly, if it is the Board's desire, because we did come through that trying to think of how folks would interpret it. Parents may have a different interpretation of what's substantial than we might as educators and things like that.
Yeah, I think that...
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you raised an interesting point and a valid point. I do think that interpretation of what a disruption in itself is, is also equals objective. So, I did some research on some other dress code policies in other states and saw that this word in J. Code was included in order to ensure that we aren't taking students out of the classroom unless there is a major or substantial disruption to the class. So, because it is so, such an objective term, you know, if we're taking a look at, I'm just worried about setting a tone where we, when those students in the classroom are minor disruptions, if we have the ability to in the classroom.
Ms. Cosby?
Well, speaking to that, what does substantial look like? I mean, I don't, I don't know what it's... Right. I mean, so I, if we're going to put that in there, I mean, I think we have to give some specific guidelines because...
And so, that would be, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, as we talk through and it may be a matter of putting out some subsequent guidance so the parents are very clear and administrators too about exposure of certain areas. And some people are very specific, even when you look at a lot of schools for upcoming, whether it's eighth grade dances, proms, things like that. They're very, very specific about parts of the body that if they're exposed and a child will be sent out of it, the midriff, it's, and I'm trying to be gender neutral. Any rear or underclothing that will be seen, any type of profane language, anything referring to a sexual nature, those type of things, just so that we can have some consistency. I know that's one of the things that we're trying to all attain as we talk about disciplinary practices and support for students that because perhaps I'm fully figured that I don't get seen as my clothing being substantially disruptive whereas someone else who may be more petite could have one of the same thing and they're okay because of the smaller frame.
So, do we have a second for the amendment? Okay, so the amendment has failed for lack of a second.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young?
If I may, I have a series of amendments, but I am going to introduce them one by one. Specifically, the first regards sexual offenses without force, i.e. indecent exposure or lewd behavior. Currently, score categorizes those to include a category, or excuse me, level two. I would propose that we eliminate level two and any sexual offense without force would be a three, four, level three, four, or five. I'll take it back when you're done.
Any second? The proposed amendment has failed for lack of a second.
Next, I would propose, Madam Chair, I still have the floor. You're indulging me, thank you. I would propose that any obscene or inappropriate language would be changed to a level three. Excuse me, currently it is a level one or a level two. The kind of language I hear and our teachers and our parents share with me and are exposed to, frankly, is just disgusting. I've got no time for it. I propose that we increase that obscene or inappropriate language, we change to level three in lieu of, like, level one or level two.
Is there a second? The motion has failed for lack of a second. Board members, we also need to be reminded that this document, the first time we received this document was on March sixth. The second time was on May fifteenth. We are now in June and we are still having the discussion. So, I want to remind Board members.
And last, Madam Chair, last but not least, I promise, I would propose that threats, physical or verbal or intimidation made against students would be increased to be equivalent with threats against teachers, a threat against a person, a threat against a person. And I should clarify, I'm sorry, I didn't, Ms. Dalton, that this regards sixth to twelfth grade. This regards the sixth to twelfth grade offenses. But that, the physical threats, physical or verbal or intimidation, threats against teacher or, excuse me, students, student to student, would constitute a level five, not unlike teachers. Can't speak for any of my colleagues, but I don't tolerate one student threatening another student. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? There is no second, the motion has failed for lack of a second. Original motion. Was to approve the action...
Was to approve the revised student code responsible ethics. The motion was made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Cosby.
Any discussion? Card question?
Ms. Cosby? Yes, Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorff?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Part one. Motion passes six to two. Thank you. The next item is to receive for action Sprint One Million Project.
Oh, good evening, Madam Chair, my pleasure again. Tonight, we are before you to discuss, to continue the discussion of the Sprint One Million Project. At our last board meeting, you had directed the administration to work with Sprint about some concerns, the primary concern focused on the device itself and the rules and the difficulty with monitoring certain devices. Our hope was that it would be laptops, obviously, the project includes the laptops. And then the Board's direction was that this would be a tablet initiative. So, at least one call was initiated with the superintendent, I participated with that. I know that Mr. Krantz has been involved as well, and I'll ask him to come up. Where are we standing at this moment? Sprint has shared with us that they understand our desire to have tablets. Their inventory, to the best of our knowledge and what they share with us, is only eight percent of their inventory are tablets. The other ninety-two percent are phones and hotspots. They, I believe, as Mr. Krantz has stepped in, they, I think, are prepared to get back in touch with us in the next few days regarding our request for the tablets. Certainly, the administration is prepared to support the distribution, the collection, the monitoring of these devices, if that's the direction of the Board. At this moment, though, we cannot assure you that they have been able to address your concerns. Let me start that in the background.
Motion?
I move that we do not proceed with this.
I have a second now.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Young not to proceed with the Sprint One Million Project. Any discussion? Card question? Ms. Dorff?
Any thoughts from our technology team?
The technology team just really hasn't had time to really flesh out the other options that may be available. Certainly, this is a priority for us to get technology in the hands of our kids. And I think this is just very disappointing. Again, I was there at the initial conversations and I just am not sure what went wrong. But it's certainly our commitment to get access to Internet and research capabilities to our kids that are equally worthy and are definitely on the edge. I just find it very disappointing.
So, can we expect the report at our July meeting, first July meeting?
I think that we would have a credible answer by July, certainly.
Card question?
Motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Young, not to proceed with the Sprint One Million Project. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorff?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
I'm staying.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Six, motion passes six, yeah, you want a name, one extension.
Could I, I apologize, could I ask for clarification? We are going to...
To delegate, we're not...
To not go forward, or we're going to wait till July when we have more information. Not go forward, thank you so much.
The next item is six, we're going to set to proceed for actions, Human Resources actions.
Good evening again. The Human Resources actions for approval this evening are as follows. The nomination of twenty-two employees, the change of contract of fourteen employees. You will notice that you have two addendums. I requested the approval of Addendum A, the nomination of three employees. I requested approval for the approval of HRD actions, and the approval of Addendum A.
A?
A, approval of Addendum A along with HRD action. Addendum B, I would like to discuss in closed session.
We need a motion? So, we need a motion to approve the HR action, Addendum, with Addendum A.
I motion to approve HR action with Addendum A.
Motion seconded.
So, it's been moved by Ms. Dorff and seconded by Ms. Owen to approve the HR action with Addendum A. Any discussion? Card question?
Motion was made by Ms. Dorff, seconded by Ms. Owen to approve Human Resources actions with Addendum A. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Next item?
Receive for action the process for the superintendent's search.
So, Board members, at this time, we have... You know, we have the timeline, but not the draft document.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we... Sorry? That we defer this to our...
We didn't, we didn't print it with the timeline, we have the timeline. But the draft document, Board members, included feedback. So, the draft document went out on the thirtieth of April for feedback and then again on the eighteenth of May for feedback. So, when you look at the document, it talks about the role of the ad hoc committee, which include Board members, and the role of the search committee, which is working at the pleasure of the Board.
Second. You made a motion to do.
To.
To defer it to this discussion.
Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Owen that we defer discussion of the search committee. To. The June nineteenth meeting. Any discussion? Call the question. Yeah, to move to the nineteenth.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero. The next item is to receive for action, school board travel and district activity requests. I only have one. And Ms. Owen would like to attend the. The SBA Annual Conference on Education, July eighteenth here in Richmond. The estimated cost is one hundred and ninety dollars. Ms. Cosby, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, this doesn't have one here where to put the dollar amount for this. But it's not for, it's not for travel.
It's a district activity.
It's a, well, it's to allocate funds to Old V Shepard for their A, B, C, D awards. We talk about teacher quality and promoting a spirit of excellence. So I want to support that.
Do you have estimate cost?
A thousand. June three. How much? A thousand, this is just for paying teachers.
So we need a motion?
This is. Old V Shepard Elementary School, I mean, all schools have something like it, but they have the A, B, C, D awards. There's above and beyond, can't remember the all the C and Ds. But this is for teachers who have gone above and beyond to promote classroom excellence. And when we talk about as a group that this is what we want to see, our teachers are going above and beyond, they have to be recognized. And this is just one small effort to use these funds to do so.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Ms. Owen's travel request and Ms. Cosby's teacher award.
District activity.
District activity.
Second. I'm saying we need a second.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Ms. Dor and seconded by Mr. Barlow. To approve the travel request by Ms. Owen and district activity request from Ms. Cosby. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, two. The next item is closed.
Madam Chair, pursuant to personnel section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, this is section A, September one thirty, June nineteen fifty, as amended, I move that School Board consider it reasonable to convene a closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment and the assigned permission, performance, position salary, discipline, or resignation of employees. The division include consideration of the year's written agenda, district, parent superintendent appointment, performance of specific school board employee, and resignment and transfers of building level administration employee members number sixteen seventeen dash thirty-six and sixteen seventeen as yourself include.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor? And now, I can't vote.